I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Little?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Pulipati?
Here. I'll ask the city clerk to announce the meetings, video recordings, and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, October 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, October 14th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metro cable 14 and on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Russ DeSharm to lead the pledge and then I invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation that will be given by Joswieh Patel and Arna Patel from BAPs.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Namaste. My name is Joswieh Patel and I am a resident of this beautiful city of Rancho Cordova. On behalf of all the volunteers at BAPS Swamna and Hindu Temple here in Rancho Cordova, I would like to lead in peace and prayer. Harihi Omah, Dyo Hu Shanti Anta Riksha Gur, Shanti Hi Prutthavi, Shanti Rappa, Shanti Rokhadya, Shanti Hi Vanaspataya, Shanti Vishve Deva, Shanti Brahma, Shanti Hi Sarva Gur, Shanti Hi Shanti Deva, Shanti Hi Sama, Shanti Ri Dhi, Jatoyata Sami, Hasita Tonu, Abhayam Guru, Shanna Guru, Prajabyo Bhayanna, Pasubha, Pasubha, Vishvanideva Savita Duri Tani Parasua, Jad Badram Tanna Asua. Om, Shanti Hi, Shanti Hi, Shanti Hi, Shushanti Bhavatu, Sarva Rishtra Shanti Bhavatu.
My name is Aina Patel and I will now translate the prayer that was recited. May there be peace in the heavens, peace in the sky, peace on earth, peace in the waters, peace in the plants and herbs, peace in the trees and forests, peace among, peace among all the divine beings. May there be peace in the universe, peace in the supreme being, peace everywhere, true peace, and let that peace come to us. May all beings experience tranquility, may there be no fear from any direction, may all creatures live in peace and harmony without fear. Oh God, may you remove all obstacles and difficulties and may all that is good and auspicious come to us. Om, peace, peace, peace. May there be supreme peace and may peace be everywhere, free from all troubles and dangers. We thank you again for allowing us this wonderful opportunity to recite the prayers. Thank you.
Shanti, ladies.
I'm glad she translated Madam America, because I was going to ask you to.
Well, I would say peace on everything. There's no way I could translate that line for life. But thank you so much, Joswieh and Arna. Next up, we have presentations. And first up, we have a presentation of proclamation recognizing Hindu Heritage Month and the Festival of Diwali and like to call on Shreeta Ramachandran to receive this proclamation. So first up, I will give you the proclamation and we'll have your team come up and receive the proclamation and then I'll give you some time to say a few words. So we're recognizing Hindu Heritage Month. Hinduism is the third largest religion with more than a billion followers worldwide, including me and several million in the United States, and a vibrant community in Rancho Cordova. There's a lot more on this proclamation, but let me tell you, the main thing about Hinduism is it's about peace, peace for you, peace for me, and peace for everybody. And the main is to spread joy and to serve others and every day. And that's the purpose. Education is a huge part of Hinduism and so is spreading joy and service for all. Is that right, Shreeta? With that, I set my hand and caused a seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to cause October to be the Hindu Heritage Month and to recognize the Festival of Diwali. And I would like to call upon the team to receive the proclamation. I'm going to come down for...
We'll have everybody come up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and distinguished guests. On behalf of the Hindu community of Rancho Cordova and the Dharmic organizations of Greater Sacramento, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to you for recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month and for supporting our request to make this proclamation a reality. This recognition is deeply meaningful to us. It reflects the city's commitment to honoring the rich cultural diversity and shared values that strengthen our community. Hindu heritage emphasizes principles such as truth, compassion, selfless service, and respect for all beings, values that align closely with the spirit of this great nation and our city. We are proud to see Rancho Cordova embracing these values and acknowledging the contribution of Hindu-Americans who have served and succeeded in fields such as education, medicine, science, business, and community services. I would also like to take a moment to share about Hindu Swam Seva Sangh or HSS. HSS is a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization that works to promote Hindu values, character development, and community services. Though its weekly activities, youth programs, and seva services initiates, HSS will strive to build strong individuals who contribute positively to society and uphold the spirit of unity and service. As we approach Diwali, the Festival of Lights, we are reminded of its timeless meanings and messages, which is light triumphs over darkness and good triumphs over evil. Once again, we sincerely thank the city of Rancho Cordova, the Honorable Mayor, and all City Council Members for this meaningful recognition and for your contribution and continued support of cultural harmony and mutual respect. Thank you. Namaste.
Thank you. Thank you, Shreeta. Vice Mayor would like to say something.
I just thought that was the cutest thing I've ever seen. You guys did a great job being in front of this big group and we are a much better community to have you culturally sprinkled throughout our community. So, great job, guys.
Thank you, ladies. Next up, we have introduction of new employees and I'd like to call upon Brittany Marisol, April Stevenson, and Russ DeSharme for the new employee introduction.
I'll take the shorter side. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, City Staff, and Community Members. My name is Brittany Mariskall. I'm the Code Enforcement Supervisor assigned to Neighborhood Services and I have the pleasure tonight to introduce our newest Code Enforcement Officer, Jordan Townsend. Jordan started with us about four months ago. He is a backfill position and currently assigned to the Rental Housing Inspection Program. And in the few short months that he's been here, we knew, we know already that Jordan's a great addition to our team and to the city. So now I'll turn it over to Jordan for a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jordan. I grew up in the San Francisco Bay Area and out of high school, I joined the US Army. After the US Army, I served with the San Francisco Police Department and I ended up here, moved into the Sacramento area, and I'm happy to serve the city of Rancho Cordova.
Good evening, Mayor Pulipati, Council Members, City Management. My name's April Stevenson. I'm the Management Analyst for the Neighborhood Services Division. And I am so incredibly honored to introduce to you Lucas McElwee, our newest Neighborhood Services Technician dedicated to the Animal Services Program. He came to us with about eight years of experience working various roles at the Sacramento Front Street Animal Shelter. Since he started the position about three months ago, we've already seen a huge increase by over 200% on some months with pet licensing compliance. And I know he will continue to add a phenomenal customer service, a fun dynamic, and strength to our city team. So I will now ask Lucas to introduce himself.
Thank you, April. Good evening. I'm very honored to be here tonight. I was born and raised in Rancho Cordova and I still remember when we officially became a city. I'm a proud Cordova High School alumni, class of 99. About four years ago, I moved back and bought my first home off Ambassador in Oakton. I couldn't be prouder to now work for a city I grew up in and have so many wonderful memories of. My grandparents were active leaders of the community along with being members of the Elks Lodge 2484. I spent a large portion of my childhood years having delicious dinners there. I'm also a member of the River City Christian Church and attend most Sundays. It's been such a joy to live and work in this amazing community and I'm grateful to be a part of its continued growth and spirit. Thank you for this opportunity and God bless.
I have a question. So, as you said, McElwee is a really old name in Rancho Cordova.
Yes, it is.
And I'm really pleased to meet you. Are you the third generation?
Yeah. Yes, I am.
Great. Because you're, I guess your parents and your aunt are your uncle.
And my grandfather.
And your grandfather, yes.
And my uncle, yep.
Yeah.
And then on my mom's side, Guston is also the last name.
Oh, yes. I know that.
Yep. We've been around a long time.
Wonderful. It's nice to meet you. Welcome.
You too. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Pulipati and Council Members. Russ DeSharm, Neighborhood Services Manager, here to introduce Tasha Toy. Delighted to bring her aboard. Tasha is our new Neighborhood Services Technician. She's assigned to our Code Enforcement Division, specifically working with our Rental Housing Inspection Program. She brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the team and we're happy to have her. I'll give her a moment to introduce herself.
Hello, everyone. Pleasure to meet you guys. I'm not as interesting as them, so I am just grateful to be here and I thank you guys for the opportunity and I hope that through time, I can grow with the city. Thank you so much.
Welcome to Rancho Cordova. Now, before we go to public comment, kids in the room, you have school tomorrow. Now's the time, if you want to step out. Okay? Unless you're here and want to listen to public comment. With that, we go to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the items will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'd like to ask the city clerk to announce a public comment.
Yes, we have three public comments. We'll start with Prapdi Patel. If you'd like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to speak and you can take the microphone and bend it towards you. Perfect.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members, City Staff, and the members of Rancho Cordova community. My name is Prapdi Patel and I am honored to extend a warm invitation on behalf of the BAPS Hindu Temple to each of you to join us for upcoming Diwali celebrations. Diwali, the Festival of Lights, is one of the most important cherished celebrations in Hindu culture, observed across India and by Hindu communities around the world. Typically in October or November, Diwali symbolizes the victory of light over darkness and good over evil. The festival celebrates the return of Lord Rama to Ayodhya after defeating the demon king Ravan. In celebrations, families like Dyes or lamps decorate their homes with rangoli and come together to welcome prosperity and happiness into their lives. At BAPS Swamna and Temple, we celebrate Diwali with special prayers, devotional activities, and the vibrant Anakut Ceremony. Anakut, meaning "mountain of food," is a grand offering of hundreds of freshly prepared vegetarian dishes to God as an expression of gratitude and devotion. At the BAPS Swamna and Temple, this celebration brings our community together in a spirit of faith, service, and harmony. BAPS temples worldwide promote values of unity, spirituality, and selfless service to society. We warmly invite you to experience the joy and spiritual richness of Diwali at our temple on Sunday, October 26th, from 12 to 6 p.m. Come witness the beauty of Anakut and the uplifting spirit of community celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a beautiful celebration. I invite all the audience on behalf of BAPs to definitely go check it out. It will be in our newsletters as well for all the information. Thank you.
Next speaker is Amy Goodwin.
Hello, my name is Reverend Amy Goodwin. I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova since 1970. I was just a tiny baby. Anyway, I'm just so pleased to see all of you and I'm honored to get a moment to speak. I'm also the commander of American Legion Post 709, right here in Rancho Cordova, and that's a memorial post for Leonard Yates, who is also a resident of this city. And he was one of the first 200 Tuskegee Airmen and it was a personal friend of mine. So, on behalf of the post, I just want to celebrate Rancho Cordova. We do such an amazing job supporting our veterans. And this is a huge veteran population with our VA Hospital and the Veteran Village and all the things that we do. But you know what? We need a veteran hall. We need a veteran hall for the VFW and the American Legion and anybody else that's a veteran. It would be such a great idea to really put this into action and really see it so we can use it. What do you guys think? I think it's a good idea. Thank you so much for letting me speak. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ayush Nayak. You can correct me when you come to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, respected Council Members, and distinguished guests. Namaste. My name is Ayush Nayak and I am a proud resident of the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm a volunteer for the Hindu Swam Seva Sangh, also known as HSS, which is an organization that promotes Hindu values, community spirit, and service. HSS follows the idea of Vasudevakutumukam, meaning "the world is one family." We believe that serving others is a way to serve the divine, as expressed in the saying, "Nadaseva, Narayanseva." October is recognized as Hindu Heritage Month, which is a wonderful and positive step for our community. This month is especially meaningful for Hindus around the world as it is also when we celebrate Diwali, the Festival of Lights. Diwali is more than just a joyous celebration, it's a time to reflect on how light triumphs over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, and good over evil, encourages us to uphold our values, act with honesty, and promote peace within our families and communities. Selfless seva, selfless service or seva, is at the heart of our celebrations and daily life. All year, HSS runs numerous different service projects such as helping food banks, cleaning up the environment, and offering educational programs. During Diwali, we focus on a special project called Seva Diwali. This project helps bring people together across the country to help fight food insecurities in our communities. Seva Diwali brings together thousands of volunteers from all over the country. The project invites people to use their homes as collection points for canned food, non-perishable items, and winter clothing. These donations go to local food banks and homeless shelters, so the spirit of Diwali and giving reaches those who need it most. Last year, Seva Diwali made a big difference. About 3,000 volunteers all over the nation collected and distributed over 717,000 pounds of food and supplies in 38 states and over 200 cities. Being the seventh consecutive year for the event, it involved 247 organizations, including Hindu, Jain, Buddhist, and Sikh temples, schools, and community groups. In the Greater Sacramento area alone, about 8,500 pounds were donated to various food banks and shelters, including Rancho Cordova Food Locker. These groups provided food to more than 266 food pantries, shelters, and community centers. These results show what we can achieve when communities work together. We kindly request your guidance and assistance in identifying more local food banks and shelters that can benefit from our outreach. Your support will help us ensure that our efforts are as inclusive and far-reaching as possible. As we celebrate Diwali, we wish to share its light and hope with all residents of Rancho Cordova. We believe that every individual, regardless of background or faith, deserves to be uplifted and respected. I am grateful to the city of Rancho Cordova for considering this initiative and I look forward to continuing to serve and support our diverse growing community. Thank you and namaste.
Thank you.
Mayor Pulipati, that's all the public comment I have, unless there's somebody else who wants to speak under general public comment.
Do you need to turn in a speaker card?
I'll get her name and address.
Okay.
Apologies for not doing the required. I was really happy to see many of our community members here speak about Diwali and I really commend Mayor Siri Puripati and Vice Mayor Garrett Gatewood and all of the council members here. I'm Sangeetha Shankar and I serve as a California Regional Director for the Hindu American Foundation. We are the nation's oldest and largest advocacy and education organization that works for the rights and representation of Hindu Americans. And I'm really happy to see the entire community of Rancho Cordova here with me today as we celebrate Diwali. While the faith thrives here in the community, we have also been facing, unfortunately, in many parts of the nation, including California and including Rancho Cordova here, a rising presence of Hindu phobia that unfortunately or deliberately misinterprets Hinduism and restricts it to Karik, Kau, and caste. And overall, there is simply a lack of education about our worldwide living faith of more than a billion people. And the people here in Rancho Cordova as well as across Sacramento County represent global Hindus, not just those from India. And your recognition of October as the Hindu Heritage Month is a very important milestone for the self-esteem of many Hindu citizens in this beautiful city. And we hope to have many more interactions with local city bodies to raise awareness about our small but vibrant community that is unfortunately, again, subject to misunderstandings. For example, last year, the very BAPS temple, you know, you have so many beautiful children and families here talking about the Diwali celebration there, who did the invocation here, their temple was vandalized with messages like "Hindus go back home." It was a very dark day for our community. And the Hindu American Foundation really does a lot of efforts to bridge the gap between the city officials and the community so that both interact each other and both are comfortable with each other. For example, last year, we organized a temple safety and security conference to educate law enforcement agencies, both state as well as federal, along with multiple interfaith leaders across Sacramento County, across Rancho Cordova, about our faith and culture. And the officials educated our community members on how to better protect their places of worship, because this is a two-way interaction, right? Both parties or both communities, whether it's the city officials or the local Hindu community members, have to do what they need to do. And the Temple Safety and Security Conference was an excellent example of this, city officials and community coming together. And we hope to see many more such collaborations and I'm sure that I will probably work with many of you here. And I really thank Mayor Siri Puripati for being such a wonderful leader for our community, always advancing our concerns, always advancing our representation here. Thank you so much.
We have a really busy schedule today and next up, we have council reports, but can I request our council members, if we could wave it to the very end? The council update?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager, do you have an important update that you need to share? Can we move you as well?
You can move me, I'll ride along with you.
Fair point. You know the most important person in the room is the city manager, though it seems otherwise. Next up is consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull from the consent calendar? Any public comment on consent calendar?
Maybe. No, there is no public comment for items on the consent calendar.
Hearing none, I will move approval of items 13.1 through 13.8.
Have the city clerk, please, call the roll.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Pulipati?
Yes. Next up, consent public hearing items, and we have none. And then we have public hearing items and I'll ask the city clerk to announce a subject.
The subject for the public hearing item is Fight Circle Digital Billboard Sign, Zoning Text Amendment, Conditional Use Permit, Minor Design Review and Operating Agreement, Mitigated Negative Declaration Prepared Pursuant to Article 6 of the California Environmental Quality Act, Project Number PLND 112401133127, Fight Circle, APN Number 0770330039000.
We'll have Nick Sosa for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. Nick Sosa with the Planning Department. Tonight's presentation is for the Fight Circle Digital Freeway Sign.
Quick, sorry. For those standing, there is a lot of space up front if you want to come up, including David Kwan.
Alrighty. So, some background on the project. The applicant, Cordova Community Council, was previously approved for two digital billboard signs at their Mineshaft property along Highway US 50, US Highway 50. Since their approval in 2023, the CCC has constructed one of the two approved billboard signs and no longer wishes to move forward with the billboard located at the western portion of their property. Since the applicant is not moving forward with their western sign, they are now proposing to construct a sign at a new location at the western entrance to the city, still along Highway 50, near Bradshaw Road, which is the application we're reviewing now. So, as part of the current application, the applicant is requesting approval for the So as part of the current application, the applicant is requesting approval for the following entitlements: a zoning text amendment to the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code, a conditional use permit for the operation of the sign, minor design review for modification of the project site and review of development standards, and an operating agreement with the city, which does include requested deviations to the required standards for the billboard So before we get into the details of the project, I wanted to go over some of the comments and concerns that were received during Planning Commission. So the project was presented to Planning Commission on August 27th for their initial feedback and their recommendation to City Council. At that hearing, what we heard from commissioners, as well as the community members, was some concerns regarding the size of the display area that was requested, concerns with the requested exemption from the sign removal requirement, and also there was a comment letter that was received from Orion Outdoor Media that was received on the project that did make claims that the project violates Outdoor Advertising Act. The Outdoor Advertising Act, as well as a zoning amendment, could be considered spot zoning. So staff and the applicant have worked on responses to these concerns that we'll be going over in the next few slides. So regarding the display area, the applicant had originally requested a total of 1,200 square feet for the project. However, with comments received from the Planning Commission and the community, the applicant has reduced that square footage to now 1,003 square feet. The applicant has also adjusted their square footage based upon the distance of the sign from the right-of-way. The graphic there shows how the increase in square footage corresponds with the increase in distance from the Caltrans right-of-way. The first sign there is representative of two existing digital billboard signs, one at the Nature Wood Site and the other at the Granite Arches Site. So both signs there are at 672 square feet and located directly adjacent to Highway 50. To the far right there on the screen is the mine shaft sign, which is shown at their approved square footage of 1,200 square feet, and located approximately 150 feet from the right-of-way. And there in the middle, at 95 feet, is their currently proposed sign for Fight Circle, which they're proposing at 1,003 square feet. So the applicant felt that the square footage was more proportional, sorry, with the project So the next concern was the requested deviation from the zoning code's requirement to remove four static billboard signs for every digital sign proposed. The applicant has removed an existing static billboard sign as part of their previous approval at their mine shaft property. That sign was located on private property, which was owned by the CCC, and therefore was able to be removed. The remaining static billboard signs within the city, specifically those along Highway 50, are located on private property, not owned by the Cordova Community Council, and therefore would not be feasible to be able to be removed.
Are you saying they took down a sign they never built?
No, there was a static billboard sign that was already on the mine shaft.
For the clarification.
Therefore, the applicant continues to request this exemption as part of their operating So lastly, there was concerns brought up from Orion Outdoor Media, who submitted a letter to council as part of this meeting. The letter claimed that the project is in violation of the California Outdoor Advertising Act, which does prohibit billboards from being placed in violation of the city and county laws and ordinances, and also claims that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with spot zoning, which is also a violation of the State Advertising Act. Staff has worked with the city's attorney's office regarding these claims, and it was found that the application is not in violation of the act, as the city's zoning does allow for deviations through the operating agreement per Rancho Cordova Municipal Code 23743150, C1 and C2. And the proposed amendment would not diminish the value of the affected property, and therefore the city attorney disagrees that the amendment constitutes spot zoning.
I don't see any of the concerns addressed about favoritism that were raised in the public hearing, and I'm curious about staff's response of why they don't think this is
I think what I would prefer as we get through the presentation...
City manager, I would say let Nick finish his presentation. We open it up to public comment, and then we will have council comments and concerns.
I'm just saying it wasn't on the list of concerns.
Fair point.
And that was perhaps the single most major concern raised at the hearing, and we've ignored it because it's convenient for us to ignore it.
Nick, complete your presentation, please.
Thank you. So those slides address some of the concerns that were heard at the Planning Commission meeting on the 27th. So now we'll jump into the details of the application. So the proposed project is located on a 2.2-acre parcel at 3127 Fight Circle. The parcel is owned office industrial mixed-use within the city's Folsom Boulevard specific plan, and is located within the Folsom Boulevard planning area designated by the city's general plan. The site is surrounded by commercial office and light industrial buildings to the north, east, and west, and US Highway 50 to the south. Across Highway 50 are residential homes, which are approximately 300 feet away from the project site. Shown here are street images of the project site. On the left is the view from Highway 50, and on the right is a street view from the entrance of the parcel on Fight Circle. So according to the applicant, as a nonprofit organization, the Cordova Community Council has identified the following project objectives: develop a revenue source for the Cordova Community Council to continue to serve the community, and to provide the city of Rancho Cordova community groups with a medium for communication to area residents. Also, according to the applicant, the development and long-term lease of the digital billboard sign would provide the CCC with long-term financial stability to continue to carry out their mission in the community. So to go over current digital billboard overlays, for digital billboard signs, the city currently has a designated digital freeway sign's overlay area listed within RCMC Section 23743150. These areas are located along the eastern portion of the city, along US Highway 50, and the image there shows the areas of the overlay that are located between Sunrise Boulevard and Hazel Avenue, south of Highway 50. These areas of the overlay are currently the only area where digital freeway signs are allowed, and the overlay provides standards and requirements for their installation and So as part of this application, the applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to add an additional overlay area to the municipal code to accommodate their requested location. So the newly proposed area would be bound by Highway 50 to the south, Business Park Drive, and Fight Circle to the north, and commercial property to the west, and a mobile home park to the east. The yellow star there is in the images representative of the current application's proposed location. The new area to the overlay would be the only requested change to the section. No changes were proposed for the development standards or the requirements. So as previously mentioned, the section does require a CUP for any new digital billboard sign within the overlay. Also, due to the modifications of the site and required site standards, a minor design review is also required to ensure the project, as well as the existing property, are still meeting applicable development standards. So for reference, these are some key development standards for the zoning code that would be applicable to digital billboard signs. So the project is limited to two display areas or faces on the sign. The sign has a maximum height of 60 feet. The sign area is allowed to be 672 square feet per display area. The sign structure, as well as the poll design, are to be simple and streamlined, and not add stylistic or architectural detailing that further calls attention to the sign. And the digital freeway sign shall not operate at brightness levels of more than .3-foot candles above ambient lighting. So these are additional standards within the section that are further standardized... There are standards that further standardize the operation of the sign and its messaging that are also listed there. These are development standards that are required for billboard signs, however, the code does allow for deviations, as I mentioned before, through an operating agreement if the applicant is requesting that agreement with the city, which one has been requested as part of this application. So shown here is the site plan for the proposed project site. The sign is proposed at the southeast corner of the property parking lot, approximately 95 feet from the right-of-way. Shown on the right, there are drawings of the proposed sign. It's hard to kind of see those square footages, but it's a 59-foot-wide display with a 17-foot height. The project would occupy approximately two parking spaces, however, the existing property would still provide sufficient parking. So shown here is a photo rendering of the proposed sign showing the view going eastbound on Highway 50. And shown here is a photo rendering of the proposed sign with the view going westbound on Highway 50. Yeah, so this would be going towards Bradshaw Boulevard, or Bradshaw Road, sorry. So for the operating agreement, the proposed project does include an operating agreement that outlines the requirements of installation, ownership, maintenance, standards, use rights, and other operating procedures for the sign. As I mentioned before, the Section 23743150 subsection C does allow for deviations through the operating agreement on a case-by-case basis. And operating agreements are only approvable by the city council if it's determined that the agreement achieves a community benefit equivalent to those that would be achieved through strict adherence of the code. So for deviation requests, as I mentioned before, the applicant is requesting an additional display sign square footage. They would be requesting the allowed sign area, which is currently limited to 672 square feet. They would be requesting an increase of 331 square feet to a total of 1,003 square feet for each display sign. Additionally, the code requires that every one digital sign installed, the applicant must remove at least four existing static billboard signs. The applicant is requesting a deviation from this requirement, and instead is proposing cancellation of their previously approved west sign in their mine shaft property, as well as the static sign that they've already removed from that property. So for the cancellation of that west sign, staff would be coming back to city council with amendments to the existing agreement for the mine shaft property to make sure that those amendments do effectively remove the references to that west sign throughout that So for reference on size and distance, on the left are examples of two other existing billboard signs along Highway 50. Both are directly adjacent to the freeway and are built at a allowed square footage of 672 square feet. On the right, an image showing the distance of 95 feet from the Caltrans right-of-way, and where the applicant requests their 1,003-square-foot sign would be proposed. Again, that would be an increase of 331 square feet from those shown on the left. So as part of the project's environmental review, it was reviewed in accordance with CEQA, and a draft initial study mitigating that declaration was prepared and circulated for the required 30-day review period from June 27th, 2025, to July 28th, 2025. Areas identified in the draft MND that required mitigation measures to avoid less-than-significant impacts on the environment were air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, and tribal cultural resources. During that public review, there were two emails that were received, one from Sacramento Area Sewer District and one from a resident here in Rancho Cordova. As a result of the comments received, there were no substantial revisions that were made to the draft MND that required recirculation of the document, but responses to those two emails were received... That were received have been included in part of the council package. Sorry, I was supposed to say council. So mitigation measures to address the less-than-significant impacts for the environmental area previously listed include emission controls and reduction during construction, bird surveys prior to ground disturbance, tree inventory and protection during construction, appropriate measures in the event any archaeological resources are exposed during construction, and a mitigation measure was added by the United Auburn Indian Community in the event that anticipated discoveries do occur on the property. So no impacts related to the substantial light or glare were identified in the MND, which included a photometric study demonstrating that the amount of light generated would be within the allowable illuminance standards for the digital billboard sign, which was that .3-foot candles. So with that, staff does recommend that the city council certify the initial study mitigating that declaration that was prepared and circulated, as well as adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and also waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance of the digital freeway sign overlay zoning text amendment, and adopt the resolution for the site circle digital billboard sign conditional use permit and minor design review, as well as approve the Fight Circle digital billboard sign operating agreement with the city. That concludes my presentation, and staff is here, as well as the applicant, to answer any questions you might have.
Please go back to the previous slide and leave it at that.
Sure.
The flow will be that I'll have the city lawyer make a comment, and then we'll have public comment, and I'll open up to city councils for comments, questions, concerns. So we'll start with the city lawyer.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a question raised that I'd just like to clarify about the role of the community council, and in particular, the president of the community council. Councilmember David Sander currently serves as the president of the community council. The community council is a nonprofit organization. Councilmember Sander receives no compensation from the community council, has never received compensation from the community council, and has no promise or offer of future employment or compensation in the future from the community council. And this, we do acknowledge and would like noted in the record, that he is the president of that nonprofit organization, and I'd just like to ask you a question, given the extensive activities that you have with the community council. Have you carefully read the items that are before the city council here tonight?
Yes.
And are you aware that the city council has to make certain findings that require your judgment as a council member?
Yes.
And are you comfortable that despite your relationship with and service to the community council, you can make those decisions as a city council member primarily for the benefit of the public and the city with disinterested zeal, notwithstanding your relationship with and work for the community council?
Yeah, our job as city council members is to make determinations like these that are in the interest of the entire community, and we sort of routinely have to do this. I'd suggest that having the opposite situation of being unable to vote on something of which you have some expertise or knowledge in the community would be very...
What expertise or knowledge? You literally are the president.
Would be very detrimental to the functioning of us as a city or as a city in a democracy.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, we next up, we're going to open it up to public hearing. Given the volume of comments that we have, I'm going to reduce the time to two minutes per resident. Do we need a motion for that, city manager? Okay, so two minutes for public comment, and we'll start public hearing.
So we currently have about 21 public comment cards, and I may receive a few more. So we will start with Annette Orelia. Following Annette will be Mike Morondo, Dan DeShong, Julie Hagan Balka, Erin O'Brien. You'll each have up to two minutes. Annette?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Annette Orelia. While a resident of Sacramento, I'm a proud vice president of the Symphony Doro Rancho Cordova Board and a member... and a member of the symphony. Symphony Dora Rancho Cordova is proud to be part of a robust volunteer service community in the city of Rancho Cordova. It's a 501(c)(3) organization and has served the community since 2013. The symphony is also proud to have been recognized as Rancho Cordova's best volunteer organization in 2019. The symphony performs between four and six free concerts annually for the citizens of Rancho Cordova. Our welcoming concerts take place in a variety of community locations, including the Performing Arts Theater at the high school, City Hall, River City Christian Church, and the Coriana Plaza Food Court. The symphony performs a significant variety of music, including pops, jazz, classical, rock and roll, and Broadway. If it's enjoyable, we play it. The symphony promotes local young composers and commissions original music. One commission is being performed in April, and that's the City Portrait Symphony by Carlos McMillan Fuentes. This is a piece dedicated to the citizens of Rancho Cordova, and the four movements represent locations in Rancho Cordova: the mill station, Meather Air Force Base, Coriana Plaza, and the American River Parkway. The symphony has performed music to silent movies and personal films also created by the young composers. The symphony's small ensembles, trios-
Sorry, Annette, maybe I'm missing the point? Is it related to the billboard?
It is.
We're getting there in 17 seconds.
Thank you. The symphony supports the request for the following reasons. Because of the strategic locations, the two billboards will serve as physical gateways and allow the residents of Rancho Cordova to know what the symphony is doing. The contract for funding with the city is also very important to enable the symphony to do the work that it's doing. We're very proud that world-renowned violinist Rachel Barton-Pine will be joining us in April.
Please wrap up your comments.
This is a moment of great pride for the city, and we're delighted to be a partner of that and support the council's support of us and the billboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commenters, when you come up on the podium, if you could say whether you approve or not before your two minutes is up, that would be great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the city council. My name is Mike Morando. I'm the president of the Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame, which has been in our committee. We recently celebrated our 10th anniversary induction ceremony to once again a capacity crowd. We've had many athletes go through here, many coaches through the city of Rancho Cordova over the last 60 years. And I wanted just to reflect our wholesale support for considering renewal of the Cordova Community Council grant that's before you tonight as well. We look at them as a valued member of, a valued partner in our community. And many of the projects, including the Hall of Fame, would not be made possible were it not for the work of the Cordova Community Council. So I'll keep my comments brief, but that's what I wanted to articulate with you all tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Pastor Dan. I'm from River City Christian Church and Capital Ministries. I've been thinking about this. Why would we do this? Why would you put a billboard up to promote something that's so fantastic as Cordova Community Council? It's a promotion, right? It's to let the people that drive by know what our city's about. So I looked in scripture, what is a community? Well, we're supposed to bear one another's burdens. We're supposed to love each other, and this can't be done in isolation. It's been my honor, as a combat veteran of Vietnam, to serve on various committees to promote the families of 9/11, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, as well as helping with the Veterans Village. I'm in front of you to offer my divine help, if I can, in shaping our city to benefit everyone. There's nothing better than a visual take on what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. Those are the activities that the organization of this council really perpetuates. It's an investment in our Cordova Community Council is an investment in ourselves. So you have two challenges in front of you, city leaders. One is to approve the billboard request. I'm asking you to support the single most important organization in our community. The second is to get through the approved two-year grant that supports the operation. Rancho Cordova would not be the lively place it is without the constant efforts of the Cordova community. I wholeheartedly support both proposals. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Julie Hagan-Balka.
Good evening, council. I just want to give my unwavering support to both the billboard and the hopes of continuing with the grant funding for the Cordova Community Council. The Cordova Community Council is a nonprofit organization that not only puts on fabulous events for our community, it also supports all of our nonprofits, all of our nonprofits in this area. So from the food locker to the RC-A-A, you name it, Cordova Community Council supports it, so the importance cannot be understated. The billboard allows us to also have more financial support to actually make those ends meet. Being an avid fundraiser for the Cordova Community Council, I can tell you it's still not enough. So tonight, I just wanted to say thank you for your continued synergy with Cordova Community Council, with the hope that you'll continue with both the billboard and the grant. Thank you very much.
Next speaker will be Erin O'Brien. Following Erin will be Amy Lacerth, Jen Larrett, Teri Lee, Caesar Limone.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to share a personal story of how CCC and the MAC have affected me since I relocated to this area from Southern California. The MAC and CCC provide so many opportunities for education, community involvement, and as an artist, the opportunity to share what I create with the community. I wholeheartedly support the digital billboard, and while a billboard technically implies advertisement, I don't see it as such. I see it as an outreach. It took me a year to find the MAC and CCC, even though I live just in Gold River. And I had heard wonderful things about both organizations, which were proven true once I joined. So my support is for approval of the billboard and continued support for funding both organizations, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to participate in both here. Thank you.
Next speaker is Amy.
Good evening. I'm Amy Larseth from Clear Channel. I'm here to speak in opposition of the billboard. I do agree that the community council does great work. I just would like them to do it legally. One thing I want to point out, the static billboard that they said that they removed, they did not own that. Clear Channel owned that billboard. Secondly, I'm very concerned about the conflict in this room. Not only is Mr. Sanders, or Sanders, pardon me, president of the council, the council also lists Vice Mayor Gatewood and Councilmember Budge as members of the organization. I think those are immutable conflicts and that the three of those people should have recused themselves, not only from the vote, but from the conversation. It feels like self-dealing. The applicant is a friend and ally of the city of Rancho Cordova, and it feels like special allowances are being made. At a minimum, the city is shortchanging itself by not running an RFP process. Had that been done, other billboard companies would have made proposals and, over the life of that entitlement, would have paid millions of dollars to the city of Rancho Cordova and offered other city benefits and community benefits, like advertising space free to the city and free to nonprofits. The worst, the city's bending the rules for friends and setting a precedent. The billboard is supersized. It's in excess of what is legally available, and it also exempts from the takedown requirements. So I'm wondering if another operator came and asked for the same exemptions, would the city council then and would the city staff approve those? Another note, at the planning commission meeting, Commissioner Raymond asked about the history of the Rancho Cordova 4:1 ratio and asked the city staff what the trade-off would be for exempting that. And the staff referred the commissioner to the applicant. That just further speaks to conflict here. That's absurd to me that the city didn't speak to the history and adherence of its own code. So I hope you take the comments seriously. I think there's a tremendous amount of conflict and opens the council up to a lot of liability. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jen Larrett.
So I'm here tonight, first of all, as a league president for the Rancho Cordova Track Club. And I think most of the leagues who are here tonight are going to tell you that probably one of the greatest challenges that we have actually is getting our information out to our families and recruiting. And that's a little bit due to the fact that we do have so many different school districts that we work with and different methods that we have to work within their systems and things like that. So having a billboard for us to be able to advertise to our families when those leagues are going to be opening, when we're accepting those, I think would be a huge benefit for our leagues to get that information out there, as leagues have replaced some of what we used to do in the education realm, for athletics specifically. The other thing I wanted to address was a post last night that Councilmember Little had put up, and someone had asked, will this be revenue generating for Rancho Cordova? Is it going to help grow our community in a positive capacity? And one of his answers was, if we're permitting money printers for local groups, give it to the food locker. So I do kind of want to address that issue a little bit, because last year, our church, as part of the interfaith council underneath the CCC, was actually able to use the digital boards for our Light the World Initiative. And one of our recipients for that funding was the Rancho Cordova Food Locker, the community food hub. And we were able to raise over $40,000 for the community food hub. So that is part of that initiative and those efforts for those billboards, of what they bring to our community and the awareness of some of those nonprofits, of what they have going on.
Just a pittance?
It's still, I mean, if we're talking about money into a-
I'd rather they have it.
Be quiet, Joe. Let her finish.
Over $40,000. So these are just some of the initiatives that we see that could be a positive influence for our nonprofits, for our leagues, that we have for our community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Teri Lee.
Good evening, city council and other single-city officer. My name is Teri Lee. I'm with the River City Christian Church, well, the crossover backup off program. And as you know, our church is just literally located on the other side of the freeway. And as you recognize, at the church, we have a large grassy area that we are planning to convert to a multi-sports use area. And with this digital billboard, it will allow it to be a granted exposure to the Rancho Cordova and what we're going to do. So with that in mind, we support approval of the digital billboard and genuine item. Thank you.
Next speaker is Caesar. Following Caesar will be Diane Rogers, Rod Borba, Joe Goff, Chris Fordham.
Good evening, city council and mayor. My name is Caesar Limone. I'm the club manager for Rancho Soccer Club. We're here to support the digital billboard proposal, also to support, sorry, also to support the approval of the grant or the community service. I can say I'm a club manager for Rancho Soccer. The RCA has provided a lot of benefits to our club, assists with some of the expenses that clubs have. It provides access to sports to a lot of youth, access to arts, access to music. So we're in favor of approving both proposals. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Diane Rogers, president and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce. I come before you tonight to urge your support for the billboard location on Highway 50 at Fight Circle. I know you hear this often, but it's true. And Rancho Cordova is unique in the roles served by our nonprofit, community leaders, and the business community. We're symbiotic. We need each other, depend on one another, and we excel at staying in our own respective lanes, but we're always willing to merge with one another for the right reasons and under the right circumstances. Our city is growing in some amazing and exciting ways, and we must find ways to support these initiatives. The billboard project is an entrepreneurial approach to nonprofit fundraising, and it should be supported. This is a positive sign of taking responsibility for your own long-term sustainability. And for that reason, we urge your support as a business community representative for Rancho Cordova.
Next speaker is Rod Borba. Rod Borba, I see. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rod Borba, and I'm treasurer of the Cordova Community Council. Been on the board, the volunteer-run board, for probably over 18 years. In my capacity as treasurer for the last-
How many years? When did you quit? Retire?
Probably for the last five years, is the approval and the movement to a more professional organization. As you know, Cordova Community Council is three times as old as the city of Rancho Cordova, at 61 years, born from a grassroots operation that many of Linda Budge and many of the founders were involved with. I'd like to have you understand that we, as a board, took this very seriously on the billboard for the last four years. Soon as we were donated the land by Patrick Willis, which was an outstanding donation to a great community group, he donated that land in the prospect and understanding that this organization, Cordova Community Council, was the heart of this city in terms of its programmatic abilities and entrusted us with the land to make decisions, which we made the decision recently to tell the Clear Channel to remove their sign from our property, as was misconstrued earlier. But this land led to our responsibility to move forward with the land. And we've been on the, probably the billboard issue for probably four to five years and through the permit process. And what excited us was the ability to bring in another billboard to another site in approval with another-
Please wrap up your comments.
Yes, another great landowner, store owner on the KP market, put in on that property allows us financial monies for the future of our organization to further fund our programs and the strength of our programs. So I'm in favor of the build-out of the new-
Thank you, Mr. Borba.
Yeah, which will prevent three other signs from being built.
The next speaker is Joe Goff. Okay, Joe is not here. Chris Fordham. The next speaker will be Dennis Grammuth. Following Dennis will be Beth Terrell, Michelle and Hale Butner, Melanie Freer.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Dennis Grammuth, retired battalion chief from Metro Fire. Fire career goes back to 1965, when I was a recruit for Rancho Cordova Fire. I've been active with the Sacramento Valley Live Steamers, Rancho Cordova's own little railroads. We've been in existence for over 50 years. Cordova Community Council has been a big supporter for us. We've enjoyed working with them, Fourth of July, the lighting of the Christmas tree, Children's Day. I support the Cordova Community Council's project, the proposed billboard, as well as the future funding. The community council is pretty much the heart of Rancho Cordova. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for almost 40 years. Unfortunately, I moved out of the city recently, but my heart is still here, and I offer full support to the community council for their projects. The sign and the future funding is a big step forward for the city of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Terrell. I'm the current president for the Ranch of Cordova Junior Lancers Football and Cheer Program, which is a nonprofit organization. I am fourth generation Ranch of Cordova resident. My grandparents first moved, my great grandparents already moved here from Minnesota. I'm also a single parent with four children. And without funding from programs that benefit from the Cordova Community Council, my kids wouldn't have been able to play sports. Sports have benefited their lives so greatly, and a majority of our families are single parent households that also benefit from the funding. The billboard helps not only the Cordova Community Council, but the city in general, the children that are in it. It keeps them off the streets and doing something proactive and busy. And I would like to show my support for both the billboard project and the continued grant for the Cordova Community Council. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michelle and Hal. You'll have up to two minutes if you're speaking.
No, he's just going to be my support here. All right, good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this time. My name is Michelle Elkins Butner, and this is my husband Hal Butner. We're both residents of Ranch of Cordova since 2006, and we've been involved with youth sports here since 2008. Tonight, we are both here representing Ranch of Cordova Little League as we are both board members. And just as a reminder, our Little League has been here in Ranch. We're starting our 72nd year, so we're excited about that. On behalf of all of our players, their families, and our dedicated volunteers, I want to thank you for your continued support and for your investment in both Cordova Community Council and RCA. Without these critical partnerships and the funding that they provide us, our league simply would not thrive as it does today. We're here tonight to strongly express our support for both Cordova Community Council items on your agenda. One is the approval of the digital billboard project, which will promote great visibility. It'll showcase all the great things that we have to offer here, and it will create long-term revenue for Ranch of Cordova. Number two is approval of the two-year Community Council grant, which ensures that every child in our community has an equal opportunity to participate in youth sports and recreation. These two measures here work hand in hand with each other. The billboard's revenue directly supports community programs like ours, keeping youth sports accessible and sustainable. So please, please continue to do all that you can to support our exceptional youth here and our beautiful community by approving both items. Thank you for your guys' time.
Next speaker is Melanie Freer.
Hello. Like many others, I'm here to speak on two things, but I'm going to just speak on 15 one right now. My name is Melanie Freer. I'm with the Ranch of Cordova River City Concert Band. We have been in Ranch of Cordova since 2012, and I'm asking if you please approve the CCC proposal for an electronic billboard to help the CCC with a sustainable source of revenue to support the many, many programs within Ranch of Cordova to continue to enhance the community of Ranch of Cordova. I'm honored to be part of the Ranch of Cordova River City Concert Band, which is Ranch of Cordova's community band. We have 60 to 70, all volunteer members in this nonprofit organization. We rely on the CCC for more than funding. The CCC leadership has supported the Ranch of Cordova River City Concert Band with networking to other groups and services. Whenever the band needs a contact to make something happen in Ranch of Cordova, the CCC leadership is right there to help with all types of resources, anything from a Santa chair to who to contact to consider performing a concert at a haunted house, or who to contact at the schools to launch our annual Dennis Gray Scholarship Fund. Likewise, the CCC has built a relationship with our band such that when they need a concert band for an annual Memorial Day ceremony or special events such as the city's 15th birthday or 20th anniversary, they call on us. Please approve this request for an electronic billboard to help the CCC with a sustainable source of revenue to support the multiple nonprofit programs such as our band to help make Ranch of Cordova a wonderful place to live and to visit. Thank you very much.
Mindy Andrus. Following Mindy will be James Garcia, Helen Whalen-Bushaw, Russ Johnson, Carrie Johnson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Mindy Andrus, and I'm with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District. I'm the BAPA Coordinator. I'm here to voice my strong support to the Cordova Community Council and speak in favor of the important request before each night to approve the renewal of the grant funding for two more years. For the past 16, 15 years, the council has been the heartbeat of the city. It brings us together over and over for countless celebrations. It makes the city more than just a collection of streets and homes. Their work reminds us that Ranch of Cordova is a community where people matter, where neighbors connect, and where traditions are cherished. I'll never forget the first time I attended a council event. It was the annual Fourth of July event in the park. I came expecting a small neighborhood gathering, but what I found was the city united with families laughing and playing together, volunteers who were beaming with pride, a sense of warmth that made me feel at home in Ranch of Cordova in a way that I had never felt before. That day showed me firsthand what the council does. It creates moments that stay with us, moments that define our city and community. That first year, I was a, a first year teacher and started my education career at Mills Middle School. This is my 24th year in the community as an educator, so Ranch of Cordova holds a special place in my heart. I want to call out the work that is done by Cheryl Gleason at the MAC and the support that the community gives to that program, which brings the arts and to our community and to our students. She supplies, she supports our schools and our students with educational events, with art shows, with supplies, and too many events, too countless to mention. We appreciate the work that she does there and the, and the partnership we have with Folsom Cordova and with the MAC. So thank you for that. As our city grows, that sense of togetherness becomes more and more important. We need to celebrate, to honor one another, to inspire the next generation of volunteers, community leaders, and students. Supporting the Cordova's Community Council ensures that this spirit not only survives, but also thrives. Tonight, I ask that you help safeguard the heart of the community by please approving that grant renewal so that the council can continue to bring pride and joy and connections to Ranch of Cordova.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker, James Garcia.
Hello, City Council. James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. First off, I'd like to say I'm not against the Cordova Community Council receiving this digital billboard. However, I do have some big concerns, knowing the fact that has been stated that it's been three, four to five years that this has been in the works since the land was donated, and it's also going to be preventing three signs from being built. Since our code was also recently approved to have the agreement back in 2023 for the first one at the mine shaft, the city council has been made aware that our code was outdated and needed to be changed. Nothing was done. We could have done this a different way. I proposed that in my letter that I sent that states we could have a full-blown digital billboard overlay, city limits to city limits. That would actually allow it. This particular case, city attorney says that it's not a spot zoning, but it does appear to be because if you look at the zone, only one billboard can actually be built within that because there's not enough 2,500 feet between billboards at the western end or at the eastern end, if this billboard is past. Again, nonprofits' presidents' top responsibilities include leading the board of directors, overseeing governance and strategic planning, ensuring financial oversight, guiding fundraising and advocacy, and serving as a chief spokesperson and primary representation of the organization. That also is a conceived as a possible conflict of interest. If you look at Google AI, it also does the exact same thing. Being unpaid president of a nonprofit could pose conflict of interest. And one of the best things, how do you address it, is to recuse themselves. This has not been done. There's many cases. Clear Channel was the owner, so now they were told to kick, be kicked off. There's also mentioned that another billboard could be proposed. We're going to have to have to deal with this again when the arena is being built because they also need a digital billboard. Do the right thing. Do the overlay before you actually approve any more billboards, period.
Next speaker is Helen.
Hi, I'm Helen Whalen-Bushaw from the Tiffany area. I'd like to bring up issues is I attended the last planning commission, and during that meeting, it was referenced that the procedures or the, the ordinance that covers billboards was not updated. That committee made decisions knowing that they were setting procedures. That's not their job. I requested at the last council meeting that you look into it, review the tape and see what they've done. Nothing has happened obvious because this is here. I am recommending that this process of this billboard be halted until the billboard ordinance is actually in place that covers the full scope. The fact that it's been publicly mentioned today that for four to five years, this has been underway, and that three people, three other billboards will be eliminated, you are cutting out the competition. Those other billboard companies could give free advertisement to the city group, but we don't know. I'm going to read real quick here. It says that a council person working as a president in a unpaid position, that the, there's a conflict there. And the conflict refers to the fact that the nonprofit financial health could directly and indirectly affect them by the council's decisions creating a qualified, a disqualifying conflict under the law like the Public Reform Act. They must disqualify themselves from a decision process. I want that to be held. The attorney said it wasn't a conflict, but yet everything I Googled said it was a conflict. We need to address that. And anybody else that sits on the, the board for the community council needs to reclusive themselves. Thank you.
Ross Johnson. Following Ross will be Carrie Johnson.
I'm Ross Johnson, been in the community since 1957. I have served on the Board of Directors for the Cordova Community Council, the Chamber Rotary. Right now, I'm serving on the Ranch of Cordova Food Hub and a couple of other organizations. I was involved in this city as a finance, part of the planning commission, so I have some knowledge of the general plan, the specific plans, and a conditional use. I was also involved in the receipt of the property from Mr. Willis for the mine shaft, which included two billboards, knowing that the billboards would be updated in the future. But the primary purpose of the billboards was to provide revenue to maintain the property. And I think that's still one of the things, because that's a big piece of property to maintain and keep it safe. And, and they've done a lot to make sure that's a safe pace, but to look at their bills. Also, the way I understand, we have a second billboard approved on that property. This is an opportunity for the city and the community members to actually have another gateway sign. If you go down there, I go every Monday night except the night to practice the River City Concert Band. It's between Mater and Bradshaw. That's the main access to Mater VA Hospital, the Capitol Air Show, the MAC. It's the main corridor. A lot of people don't get to the other end. I think the fact that the community organization, which is here for the benefit of the community nonprofits, having a gateway sign, monster one over that beautiful flyway we're going to have over the freeway and have one right at the other end serves better to let everybody know what we're doing in our community. So I support the both what the Cordova Community Council does, and I support the relocation of this approved digital sign. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Carrie Johnson. I'm a 40-year resident of Ranch of Cordova, and I do serve as the executive director of the Ranch of Cordova Community Food Hub. Digital billboards are a valuable tool for communication in any community. It broadens, it provides a broader reach with very much high visibility. Nonprofits face unique challenges in raising awareness and securing resources for their mission. Cordova Community Council has a unique opportunity to broaden the message of our great city and simultaneously provide a revenue stream for a very critical nonprofit. Cordova Community Council's footprint is woven into every single aspect of this great city, and this is what I believe about them truly. They level the playing field for access to joy and to belonging in this community. And for that reason, I approve the billboard request and the continued support of the Cordova Community Council. Thank you.
In addition to the public comments that we have heard on this item, the following individuals emailed the council as well. James Garcia, Beau Pally, and Charles Beck, Beau Pally, Tara Colvin-Bach, and Cheryl Longsworth. Those comments have been distributed to the council, placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers for public comments and have been posted on the city's website. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this item? I believe the remainder of the speaker cards I have are for other items. Did you have one? Okay, can you come forward? Some individuals did not list what item they wanted to speak under on their public comment card. Some placed two items, some scratched out items, so I am deciphering what people want to speak under. That's okay. Thank you. Just announce your name, please.
All right. My name is Long Fatasi Will Logo. This is my wife, Donisha Longo, and this is my son, Tasi Logo. And I just want to say, since we're talking about billboards, I just want to remind everybody, we are billboards, okay? You got to be careful what we represent, what we're displaying, all right? But the reason why I'm up here is I'm the founder of Main Street Media Sports, uh, Main Street Media Sports League, and also a Ranch Cordova Athletic Association member. And I'm here to support the two-year grant with the CCC. The CCC helps us with facilities, providing facilities for all our leagues, for our, for our kids, and also enrollment fees for, for our kids as well in our league. Last year, when I joined, we had 98, 98, and this year we had 135. Out of the 135, 70 of those kids needed financial assistance, and that's with the help of the CCC. 100% of that, those kids that needed funds were from a specific district, and that's the Lincoln Village District in which I represent, which I'm from. That also, Lincoln Village District is the lowest earning income district out of all districts, and we need love in that district. So CCC, I just want to shout out David Sander for showing love to our district because we need love there, we need unity, we need healing, and most importantly, in that district, we need God. And we use, we use F Y cells as a chosen horse to bring character development to the community. And with, and that's really what we're about, and our kids really need it in that district. And in the time, more than ever, right now, we really, 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 our families need that financial assistance that the CCC provides, so please approve that. And I just want to shout out Beth Terrell, president of Ranch Cordova, Shelly Blanchard, she's like an auntie, she got that vibe. Ian Wimrock, he's like Bruce Wayne, I promise he's a superhero. David Sander for believing in me, thank you.
Please wrap up your comments.
And then also Jason Harper, I thank God for him, he's been like a destiny helper. But don't forget, everybody in here, since we're talking about it, we are billboards. What message are we displaying every day? What type of character are we displaying? And what type of leadership are we displaying?
Thank you. That was a thank you speech, Oscar nomination award speech, everything rolled into one.
Don't forget the shout out.
Yeah. To God, to my mom. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I see the applicants in the room. Would you like to come up and make your side of the story or make a pitch?
Good evening, Mayor Pol Potte, members of the city council. We have a long, long evening tonight, so we'll be really brief in our comments. Just want to respond to some of the comments that were brought up by some of the speakers tonight and also give a little context of how we arrived here tonight. I'm here also with Shelly Blanchard, the executive director for the Cordova Community Council, Dave Nibbo with Primeout Media, Tiffany Wright with R C Engineering, and several members of the Cordova Community Council Board of Directors are also here this evening. It is true, we've been working with your staff for multiple years on this billboard. And it's true, we've been working with your staff for multiple years on this billboard and the other two mine shaft billboards. And I think that's made the application a better project. I did want to point out, there's some discussion of illegality and not following state law on your own land use policies as it relates to the approval for these billboards tonight. We worked with your staff on a ISMDA, that's a mitigated nigg deck, declaration per SEQA. Typically in SEQA, your lands attorney can confirm this. Responding to comments is not required in mitigated nigg decks. And we have, as an applicant, has voluntarily responded to every comment for this billboard and the other two. We had over 100 comments for the last mitigated nigg deck that you approved last year. We actually had one comment for this SEQA document for this fight circle sign, which we did respond to as well. And I just want to point out that those five entitlements are being asked to consider this evening, the design review, the zoning text amendment, the conditional use permit, the mitigated nigg deck and the operating agreement are all in full accordance with state law and your own land use policies. And we have been treated the same as any applicant that has came before you with digital signs in the past or in the future. The other thing I want to point out is this is a nonprofit applicant that's requesting action this evening. 100% of the Cordova Community Council's profits from this digital sign will be reinvested in the community. And I'm not sure if some of the private sector digital sign companies can say the, make the same claim. And so I want to point that out. The other point that I wanted to point out, which was brought up earlier by the Clear Channel representative, is they did own that Clear Channel sign. However, the property had been on property, or the property that the sign was built on was owned by the Cordova Community Council, inherited by Patrick Willis when the property was donated. They were on a month-to-month lease in the last couple of years of the existence of the sign. And so as the Cordova Community Council moved forward with the mine shaft sign, they canceled that monthly, or that lease of the static sign to allow them to move forward and remove that sign per your ordinance. The other thing I want to point out is the operating agreement, much like the development agreement that you approved for other developments, gives the city essentially a ability to negotiate with an applicant for a return of certain things to allow for deviations, the waiving of the four sign removal process or requirement for digital signs to go up. If you look at the community benefits section of the operating agreement, there will be, we're not going to discuss giving free advertising space to the sign. We're going to be required to do that and willingly do that so that that gateway sign has been mentioned this evening can have welcome to Ranch Cordova messages. It can promote a lot of the community organizations that have spoke here this evening. That's going to be a focal point and a significant chunk of advertising space throughout the existence of the sign. And so I think, again, that's a, that's a non-negotiable item. It's in the operating agreement. And again, as I said, and we can get into the details, Shelley can talk about the programming. But 100% of the proceeds for the sign to the Cordova Community Council will be reinvested in the community. So I think that's a really important distinction as you look at other private companies that come to you with signs in the future or in the past. And so I did want to bring up Dave Nible to talk about some of the technical changes we made from the planning commission to this evening. We did hear the, a couple of the comments from commissioners on August 27th and comments from the public. And we made, voluntarily made changes to reduce the size and also provide less illumination in the sign as relates to some of the communities that are around it. So if I could have Dave come up and speak to that a bit. Then we also want to wrap with Shelley with some closing comments, again, for what this sign would mean to the organization in terms of its long-term funding stability. So again, it's been a long evening. We appreciate your patience and we do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Hi. My name is David Nible. I'm a billboard operator, owner, and I consult with various entities to develop billboards. I work for Shelley, so my job is to maximize the revenue of this billboard for the Cordova Community Council. A couple of the issues that have been raised today, that were raised in the planning commission is the size of the billboard. And I think staff did a great job explaining how we're a little bit further away, significantly further away than any other billboard besides the mine shaft in the Highway 50 corridor up to Biz 80. There's only one other sign that's further away and that's Cal Expo down on Biz 80. So this, this is a significant billboard. I'm sorry, I misspoke. There is the one at Palladio, which is out there in Fullston. You probably don't know it because it's so far away, you can't see it. The other issue is, is we're bringing a technology to this. It's essentially louvers and it's, they're vertical slats on the side of the, on the side of the, on the face of the billboard. And so you won't be able to see the billboard as you approach. Normally you would be able to see it from a long ways away. Now you can only see it when you're in front of it. And as you start to move away from it, it will also shut it down. This isn't only the first billboard in the region that's going to use this technology. There's only been used like five or six times in the entire country. It's brand new stuff that we're going to bring here. And that's to control the light mitigation that may bleed over because we want to be as good partners as possible.
Did you say new technology?
Yeah.
Ding ding.
Let's see. Finally, if I may just speak for one second, for, since I am in the billboard industry and we've had, some of my friendly competitors have spoken up about, I think, I think basically it comes down to, it's, the argument is that it's against law because it's not fair. And it's not fair because it's a, it's a good deal. And I, I don't really know how else to approach that other than if somebody else had proposed this, theoretically, that might have been their deal. But they didn't propose that. And there hasn't been other proposals. And in the future, there could be proposals. There's nothing this evening that stops that from happening in the future. I don't know when anybody's speaking about three, four signs that won't be built. I don't know where that came from. It's, it's not a part of our application. So it's, it's not legal. It's just a good deal for the Cordova Community Council and the other companies aren't liking that. So if you have any further questions, I can answer. Otherwise, I'll just sit down.
Thank you. Actually, if you can have both applicants come up to the podium. I think the council member has a few questions. Council member Little.
Why do you think all the other companies haven't submitted that application?
Well, I can start with that. I've been a land use consultant in Ranch Cordova for over 20 years. And I don't talk about it a lot, but I actually grew up in Ranch Cordova. I moved here 43 years ago. My parents still live in Ranch Cordova. I've seen the community.
And by the way, my question was for staff, not the paid consultants.
Okay.
Well, and I will address it though, since I'm already speaking. So I'll just wrap up really quickly. The previous landowner donated the property to the Cordova Community Council for the purposes of maximizing its long-term funding stability. As that occurred, and he had mentioned to them, because he had considered submitting for a digital sign years ago, that would be a great opportunity to do that. He had a long-term lease with Clear Channel for the static sign that has been taken down last year. He said there's an opportunity to go to a month-to-month on that sign and remove that sign.
Can I, can I interject really quick?
Sure.
Do you think it looks good to kick another private participant off your property and then go apply for a new billboard?
They were a for-profit company that was leasing the property. They weren't kicked off the property.
But you discontinued a month-to-month lease.
The, the law allows for that to occur, so.
But don't you think that looks like kind of an optics issue?
That's for you to determine, not, not me.
And I am determined, and that's why I got elected to make those decisions.
Yeah, well. Any other questions we can answer?
Any other questions concerning Councilmember Little to staff?
I would like to give Nick a chance to explain why he thinks it's what favoritism.
Since he waffled when I asked, and it looked like the first time it crossed his mind.
No, no.
Building an administrative record here.
I will pass that question to staff. City manager, can you please answer that? I'll have the city manager respond to that.
I'd be happy to help.
Go ahead, lawyer.
And if I might just, in the interest of only speaking once, address a few of the legal issues that came up with your permission through the mayor. First, let me, let me talk a bit about, and I'll just handle, if I may, just a number of the legal points. Spot zoning came up. Spot zoning is, is not applicable here as a concept. Spot zoning is something where there's discrimination against a zone, against a particular property that limits its rights, that takes away something. It's actually a fairness concept. This isn't the case here because what's at issue is, is this property owner getting some extra benefit that's not involved here. And that does transition a bit to a brief discussion about the history, as I recall, from the council's evolution of its work on billboards. And I've been here long enough to, I think, have been here for, for every conversation that it's had about that, that history and that evolution. And what started in the city a long time ago is, is a conversation about being really concerned about having a single bill, electronic billboard anywhere. And therefore, a very limited experiment about where could the city try this out? Where could the city see if this might work? And where could the city have a model that might allow for there to be diverse public benefits generated in exchange for experimenting with whether this could work? And then when you experimented, as you're allowed to do, and decided to let it go in a small location along, along the freeway, you overall, after many council meetings and talking about how it went, essentially decided that you thought the experiment was working. And so you were receptive to other applications that would expand the places where it was allowed. And this doesn't require you to holistically approve a zoning for a particular use in every place in the city that it might possibly go at once. The law allows your thinking to evolve. And that arguably is, is what's happening here by you progressively. There were some comments made about you have to consider all the locations in the city at once where a particular use might be allowed. And I, I think it's important to think of your, the evolution of your own thinking on this issue in the context of that, of that history. Second, let me speak to the, the concept of just the public benefit. I, I view it slightly differently than the applicant's consultant just spoke. The municipal code says you can approve an operating agreement instead of requiring strict compliance with this list of, of careful standards that we wrote if you measure the public benefit. And the code deliberately allows you to define what public benefit is, is a public benefit to you. And I think in essence, some of the, the businesses that have come to you before have said, the primary public benefit that we're going to give you is money. We're companies, we'll give you some advertising time, but the primary public benefit, we will offer you, the city, and that's been in other operating agreements. So I think here, if I understand the essence of this, you've instead had a lot of community nonprofits come and say, this owner, this community council, by virtue of who it is, by virtue of its mission, by virtue of where its money will go that's generated from this, is providing public benefit. And I, I don't read the code, I don't read that section of the code as requiring you in any way to just take cash.
I don't think anyone's seconded.
And, and then lastly, on the conflicts, again, we've spoken to Mr. Sander, but, but to a couple of the comments that were made about council members. Council members who volunteer their time and service to nonprofits that pay them no money and are elevated to positions of leadership in those nonprofits, don't have a financial interest in the decisions involving those nonprofits. They don't get paid anything as a result of those decisions.
Adam, if I was made chair of ITLV, could I vote on an ITLV monetary distribution request?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm going to speak to the facts that are in front of me, not, I'm...
I have a feeling the answer would be no.
If, if you were serving on a nonprofit board that just provided public benefits in the city of Ranch Cordova, my advice for you would be the same as it is to your colleagues here tonight.
Should we apply for a billboard? I have a feeling it wouldn't be granted.
Okay. So let's move on. And Councilmember Little, do you have any other comments, concerns for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, got some rough notes here. I'm really disappointed in staff for bringing this forward. It's clear favoritism. No response to my question. They deferred to the applicant again, and they deferred to our city attorney, who was not the person making the decision, the person who made the recommendation with staff. And staff can't defend the favoritism. That's pretty telling. It's very shameful. We had zero public comment and support from people unaffiliated with CCC. The sole person to talk about the allegations of favoritism was the paid consultant. That is an unreliable source. And they just summarily dismissed it. They said, anyone else could apply for this? No, they couldn't because we don't fricking grant them. Why aren't people applying for it? Because we don't grant them. We're granting them for our friends. I'm extremely disappointed in my colleagues with conflicts of interest for not recusing themselves. The justification was special expertise, as if bias was unaffected by special expertise, whatever that might be. I think we're creating a really good record for would-be litigants. I actually hold respect for Lee Frechett for recusing himself from the planning commission vote. I think that was a really honorable thing. I think some people could take some lessons from it. You have a little bit of a tighter moral compass than your friends. Adam, I'm not happy with you for...
Member, I think the comments are with respect to the billboard.
I'm talking about the billboard. We're talking about the process.
No, I think we need to keep it to...
Okay, I do CUP work, conditional use permits in my job. I defend these when councils and boards of supervisors approve these things. This stinks. I would hate to have to defend this one as a lawyer. Tell you that much. As I mentioned already, would you really think me and my friends and our nonprofit or whoever could apply for this and we get it? Hell, no. You know we wouldn't. I think this fits in the larger theme of Ranch Cordova is like, what, we're 86,000 people now or something like that? And there's like 50 people in the city civically engaged and half of them, they're in this room. And it's kind of a city for 50 people and a lot of other people aren't engaged and just kind of live here. And we just continue to cut deals from our friends. Our city code says a clear policy of reducing the number of billboards. We're just violating that for no reason. The ends justify the means. Who's getting it is more important than how they get it. That's wrong. And it doesn't take a lifetime of Catholic education to recognize that that's wrong. But I got one, and so I guess I can recognize it. I have friends who get money from the CCC and their organizations who reached out to me, who asked for me to oppose this billboard and said they were afraid to get public comment and opposition because they're afraid of losing money from the CCC if they oppose the billboard. I think that speaks volumes. Finally, last comment. People were saying, why don't we just update the whole billboard and just figure out rules for people to apply to them and do it the right way? Going back to my first comment, we don't approve new billboards. We're never going to make that rule because we don't approve them. If we made rules to approve billboards, we'd have to allow other ones. We're doing this because this is the only way to do it, to create special favors for friends. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Budge.
So, um, for those of us who've lived in Ranch Cordova for any length of time, and we've heard tonight from an awful lot of people who've been here a very long time. And the whole reason community council has the word "community" in it is because that's exactly what we are. And that's exactly what they are helping us to preserve and to maintain and to provide opportunities for everybody who lives in town to participate. And it's fair to say that the vast majority of people who've been here for any length of time have been members of community council at some point or another. In fact, when we incorporated, all of you who were here will remember that four of the five original council members were all past presidents or presidents of the Cordova Community Council. And all four of us had been members of the Chamber of Commerce, including a couple of past presidents of the Chamber of Commerce, because that's what the community of Ranch Cordova is about. But speaking to this issue particularly, everybody knows that I have as, as much dislike for billboards as I do for palm trees. And...
And this billboard's going to have palm trees on it. Electric palm trees.
Yeah, he promised me palm trees. And, and anyway you look at it, this community has engaged for a very long time in an effort to limit where billboards are located. And that's why when people came forward, when, when the commercial companies came forward and said, we want a billboard on Highway 50... and said, "We want a billboard on Highway 50," we put them out on the east of Sunrise in our billboard farm. If you'll think about it, there are no billboards between Sunrise and Watt Avenue because Corpac, decades ago, put our collective feet down and said, "We didn't want to look like Highway 80 or Highway 99 or whatever." So, this is quite a departure for me personally. But as a longtime member and a past president of the community council, my chief concern and my number-one priority has got to be the establishment of a secure fiscal foundation for community councils so that they continue to do what they have been doing so well since 1959 to 2059 and beyond. And they've got to be secure from the whims of politicians and boards of directors. So, as I said, it's my priority to help them create that, and this is the way that, in which people are doing that nowadays. So, I am going to support this. And every time I drive by, I hold my nose.
Councilmember Sander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two comments I need to make, one on conflict of interest and one on the billboard in front of us. Conflict of interest in this business, when you're an elected official, has two aspects. One, the legal aspect, which we've been through. If you have a financial benefit as a result of voting on something, you're barred from voting on that. There is an item later on the agenda tonight that is close to my home. I cannot vote or participate in anything having to do with that. Mr. Frechette is employed by the Cordova Community Council, therefore cannot vote on anything related to the Cordova Community Council because he receives income. I receive no income from the Cordova Community Council. I could probably show pretty good evidence through tax returns of money going the other way, in a large amount. But you know, there's also the appearance of conflict, and that's really, I think, what people in the room who are worried about this are feeling. The problem with that appearance is that all is in the eye of the beholder. So if you want to see the conflict, you can see the conflict. If you don't think it's a conflict, you won't see the conflict. What does that mean from a public policy point of view? We have to have some kind of objective standard. So there is an objective standard. That's what the city attorney asked me questions about earlier, which I summarized as no personal profit, one way or the other, from voting on something. If we didn't have that, none of us could really vote on anything, most likely. Linda's a past chamber president, a past community council president. Garrett has served on the chamber board. Siri was in the chamber program. I was a former chamber board member. Siri helps lead a community organization. Garrett's been a youth coach. I've been a youth coach. You start adding all these things together, and we would be paralyzed as a body from acting if all of those things somehow were not allowed, we were not allowed to participate with anything that impacted them. And actually, a few years ago in state law, there was, or there was in state legislation, there was a proposal that no council member should ever have any contact with a nonprofit if they're a sitting council member. That was defeated in the legislature. But can you imagine a world where something like that was imposed? All of us sitting up here would be totally disconnected. We probably couldn't even belong to a church in our jurisdiction. That would be like electing robots to run your city, and nobody wants that. Our democracy is built on participation. All of you are here tonight as a result of participation. We're sitting up here as a result of participation. This is the thing that sets us apart from democracies elsewhere and governments all over the world. And it was recognized as early as the 1830s by Alexis de Tocqueville, who came here, went to small cities on the East Coast and said, "You know, it's amazing. There's little committees of people getting together, making decisions about their community, and the king isn't telling them to do it." How is that possible? How can they make these decisions on their own? We're based on making those decisions on our own. The entire philosophy of the Cordova Community Council is to bring people together around issues they care about to lift up the entire community. And we should not corrupt that ideal that has served us so well, not only here, but in the entire history of our country. That idea has served us so well, of all of us having some civic responsibility to do something. Do not allow that to be canceled by gross politics.
So, the slippery slope fallacy is when you're president of an organization, it might stop you from going to church?
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Garrett.
Just on the point of the billboard, I'll be really quick. We are moving an approved billboard from one site to another. I think that has not been particularly clear.
No, it's a new application. You cannot move permits. We just denied a permit, the planning commission, for the car wash trying to move its permit. You can't move permits. That's not true.
The practical effect is that an approved billboard at another site is being canceled in exchange for this site. Someone made the assertion that we don't have the ability to change rules. If that was true, we could never change an ordinance of any kind. We could never modify anything. So I don't think that's a very realistic argument. We do have the right to favor applicants who show greater benefit for the community. Hopefully, we would do that in everything we do. Can you imagine a council where you weren't allowed to choose who was the greater benefit to your community in your decision-making? That's a nonstarter. So choosing a project that benefits Rancho Cordova, all of Rancho Cordova, makes a ton of sense. This benefits the nonprofit community more than the other location does, which is why the reason is in front of us. This is more dollars for arts, kids, everyone you've heard from tonight. Every Seventh Image, I think it's every seventh, will be publicly available to the city and to the nonprofit community to advertise. This is a better position, as we've heard, because now we have this ability at both ends of Rancho Cordova, not two next to each other at one end of Rancho Cordova. And finally, I'm proud of the city. I am proud of our staff. I am proud of my colleagues for the way we can work amicably together for mutual benefit, and I hope we never lose that spirit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garrett Gatewood?
All right. I have some questions, because Joe put them out on the internet, and I just want to make sure. Billboards are 100% illegal in the project location per the zoning code. Are they 100% illegal, Adam?
His proposal is to allow them in this location.
So that would make them not 100% illegal if we were to approve this?
You're allowed to change...
It's rewriting our laws to make it illegal.
But that would make it legal, not illegal. That's what you meant.
But we wouldn't do it for anyone else.
But once again, you said it was 100% illegal, so it's not.
Well, it is under the current code. Right now, as I'm breathing, it's illegal.
But if we rewrite it, then it would be...
Give us a billboard for ITLV, then.
It's all right, you can say it. It's legal. New billboards are effectively illegal in Rancho Cordova. You have to tear down three and put up one per code. If we change the code, then it will be...
That was wrong. It was four, so it's even worse. And they kick someone off their property so they can go build a new one.
But once again, is that illegal or not? You're a lawyer. Words have mattered, right?
We're making it legal through corruption.
So then, that would make it very good, legal.
Through corruption.
Thank you. Through corruption, because David's making all that money from that nonprofit.
It's not about money. It's about betraying the private market...
Betraying the private market.
...benefiting a single market participant in a private market just because who they are.
Again, not illegal.
Because you're doing it.
But not illegal. Cool. What? What? He's crazy. All right. Anyways, sorry. I apologize, guys. The Clear Channel person, I'm curious how they found out I was on a board for Cordova Community Council, since I've never been, but good job on research.
They said you're a member. They didn't say you're...
I'm a member? How did I become a member? That's even more...
You're on their website.
I support them. I love you guys. You guys are great. You guys make the star in Rancho Cordova. I think we're blessed to have people that are willing to work for nothing to support our community. And every piece of you, from my silly Mac station that I love to go get arts for Legos, to the fact that you're willing to do a baseball program, the fact that we keep fighting to try to make Rancho Cordova, you make Rancho special. And so if there's anything I can do, including a silly billboard, which I still have to figure out why the heck people hate billboards, because I can't believe that doesn't care about billboards, but yeah, I got it. Rip three community down. The good news is, this billboard will be only palm trees. So, clear and decisive electronic palm trees for everyone. However, my boy James came up with a great idea, and we do have an amazing stadium being built because of the community members out there, and I do think we should do a billboard thingy overlay, like James said. That way, we wouldn't have these problems, and James is right. So, I would love to talk about that. I won't do that until we bring up new ideas. And I support you guys, and I can't, you know, wait. I won't have to hold my nose, as long as we have cool things up there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So this project was requested by the Cordova Community Council, and it has a lot of, from what I see, this is the applicant that has come to us. So I'm going to speak to facts from the applications that we do have on the table. If there was some other applicant competing for this, then we could do pros and cons of having one versus the other, but I'm going to speak to the applicant that is here. And this particular billboard is going to create a new communication tool for Rancho Cordova's public service announcements and events. I think we're going to get a turn after every so many ads to do Rancho Cordova's announcement. It offers potential revenue for the city through the operating agreement. We've seen that this location is appropriate for the free of visibility and is buffered from the residential areas. Now, at the same time, I would like to acknowledge the community concerns. There about some visual impacts that the residents have bought up, maybe some precedents that it sets, but we should be careful about the operational standards and make sure that we enforce the provisions for this billboard. The fact is that the Cordova Community Council is actually being innovative in trying to generate revenue to itself and not looking for handout from the city. It's sustaining itself, and this is a win for the city if there's revenue that they can use for community enhancement. We have a lot of residents here today that are speaking for this billboard. I do not see a lot of opposition, and again, you don't have my name on the Cordova Community Council Board or, you know, from that regard. But I am speaking to the facts that we have a lot of residents that are speaking for it that have enhanced from these programs that the community is offering to them. We all know, we've all served on nonprofits, and that is truly, truly a thankless job. I don't know why we do it. But if we do, and we're still penalized for it, that is part and parcel of serving on nonprofits, so that comes with it. So with that regard, I'm going to just speak to the facts that this is generating revenue to the city. It is funding community members. I do not see another applicant here that has not been approved, that have come to the table, and they've been approved, but we're approving this one over the other. So with that in regard, I approve of moving ahead with this billboard sign operating agreement.
Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion. Oh, before I have a motion, I'm going to close public comment. Did we hear from all the public on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment, and then we're going...
Public hearing. Public hearing.
Public hearing. Thank you. Nail it. And then, do we have a motion?
Yes. I will move that the environmental document is adequate and appropriate, waive the first reading, and introduce the ordinance for the digital freeway sign overlay zoning text amendment, and adopt the resolution for the Fight Circle Digital Billboard Sign Condition Use Prevented Minor Design Review, and approve the Fight Circle Digital Billboard Sign Operating Agreement.
Second.
Read the roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
The vote is 4-1. The motion passes. The no vote is Little.
Okay. We move on to regular calendar items, and allow the city clerk to announce the subject.
The subject for 16.1, "Presentation of the Proposed Sacramento County Homeless and Housing Partnership Model."
Linda, the irony of you and I voting pro-billboard, having torn down dozens, dozens in our career in the community...
I hope somebody remembers the 250 billboards that used to be on Folsom Boulevard.
I actually had a question for the applicant really quick, guys.
Come here.
Brian?
Brian?
Do you know about Paladio? Do you know where the funding for that billboard goes?
Can't bring it up. We are avoiding it.
I know, I'm just, it's a question.
Actually...
You can tell me offline.
Tell her offline.
Yeah.
They'll tell you later.
Yeah, please do.
Adam, you're here to talk about homeless stuff? Got it.
Okay. Stephen Heisler, let's start with the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Stephen Heisler, Housing Manager for the city of Rancho Cordova, and feeling a little bit like the frosting in the middle of an Oreo cookie. Here to sort of kick off the presentation for the Sacramento County Proposed Homeless and Housing Partnership Model presentation. And joining me here tonight is Emily Halken with Sacramento County. And I have a few brief slides, and then I'll pass it over to her, and then we'll wrap it up with just a couple more slides. Also joining us in the audience this evening are County Executive David Villanueva and Sean, I'm sorry, I don't remember which department, but we have Shifan Qatari from the county, and also Supervisor Pat Hume. So the goals of this presentation are to provide just a brief background of the Sacramento County Homeless Continuum of Care, and also the recent discussions that have been happening around increasing cross-jurisdiction collaboration on homelessness. And then, secondly, we'll be providing a presentation on the proposed, lots of Ps tonight, sorry, Sacramento County Homeless and Housing Partnership Model. And then, lastly, we've got a couple of questions for council, and then open for discussion on the Sacramento County proposal. So just to provide sort of a brief update, again, on the most recent homeless point-in-time count numbers that are now getting a little bit dated, but we have the next upcoming count coming in January of 2026. So in 2022, we hit sort of our peak point-in-time count number at 9,278, and then that came down pretty significantly in 2024. And then, as well, you can see, the count there in Rancho Cordova has been fairly steady, and then we saw a little bit of a decline in 2024 as well. So to provide some brief background on the Sacramento Continuum of Care, basically, what it is, is a federally funded grant program through HUD. And I apologize, I've kind of double-stuffed this slide with as many acronyms as possible. But it's a federally funded grant program, bringing in about $40 million annually for homeless housing and services programs across Sacramento County. Within the COC program, there are some certain HUD requirements, like doing the point-in-time count at least every two years, having a lead agency manage the HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System, and the Coordinated Entry System that provides centralized client service referrals. And in Sacramento County, the nonprofit Sacramento Steps Forward, and I believe we do have a staff member from Sacramento, oh, you left, okay. We got too late. But we do, so we have identified Sacramento Steps Forward as the lead agency for the Sacramento COC. And also locally, SSF, Sacramento Steps Forward, has been instrumental in developing and expanding the Coordinated Access System with a number of partners as well. And that is sort of the single point of entry for homeless prevention services and other service connections. Currently, the Sacramento COC is governed by a 30-member board, made up of sort of a diverse number of groups, including local government staff, homeless service providers, individuals with lived experience, community advocates, and others. And the city of Rancho Cordova is represented on that board and committees through the Housing Division staff. And then, lastly, the Sacramento COC also receives a direct allocation from the state program, Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention, or H-HAT, program, whenever that program is funded through the state budget. So that's a program that funds the largest cities and counties and also COCs, and so the Sacramento COC gets a direct allocation. So just to talk a bit about the brief recent history on homeless partnership conversations, as it is, it has been an ongoing challenge to try and improve the coordination across jurisdictions around policy, operations, and funding priorities. So in 2019, there was a grand jury report that looked at, or, you know, requested identifying different organizational models that could be more responsive to the needs of the homelessness crisis, sort of countywide. In 2021, as a response to that, SSF established the Sacramento Homeless Policy Council, which would provide strategic and collaborative leadership, and the members of that policy council have included elected officials across jurisdictions in Sacramento County. Rancho Cordova has had a seat on that policy council as well. In 2023, a consultant team funded by both the county and Sacramento Steps Forward delivered a final consultant report, looking at multiple shared governance options and looking at models sort of across the nation. That launched discussions among county, city, and SSF on restructuring oversight and administration, and that has more or less led to the consideration of the proposal that you're going to hear more about in detail tonight, the Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board. Also on this track, related, but sort of on a separate kind of track, in 2025, Senate Bill 802 was introduced, which proposed restructuring pretty significantly, the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, as a new JPA, the Sacramento Area Housing and Homelessness Agency. This agency would have sort of more than just homelessness as its purview, would include sort of all affordable housing or housing conversations within the county. So it would include sort of affordable housing... So it would include sort of affordable housing, local housing trust funds, Section 8 housing voucher programs, federally funded grant programs like CDBG, and also serve as the new COC. So that's a bit of background. I'm going to pass it on to Emily now to propose, or to present the county proposal and then I'll end off the presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me. As Stefan said, my name is Emily Halken and I serve as the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing for Sacramento County, working in close partnership with Stefan and our other partners in the city. And Stefan did a really great job of giving a background, so I'm going to speed through a couple of these slides in hopes that we can reserve a good amount of time for some input from you all. You know, as we've been talking with our board as well as with members of other communities around homelessness, certainly recognize there's a space for a lot of folks. You guys had a really robust conversation about the impact of community-based organizations and we see that as well. But one of the things that we're consistently hearing throughout the community is the need for the desire for more transparency in the work that we do around homelessness and housing, as well as actions that really reflect the urgency of this complex issue. And as Stefan said, the homeless numbers, while they've taken a recent dip, they've generally been an upward trajectory. And we see, the Board of Supervisors, I'm sure you do here as well, is that the community is really looking towards you as elected officials to take bold actions and to more directly oversee some of this work, which is how we got to where we are today. And so tonight, as Stefan said, I'm here to share just one potential model for rethinking how we might approach this work, really working to retain local jurisdictional control over existing homeless and housing funds that you already oversee, but really to create a space, a more dedicated space for local elected officials to work together and across jurisdictions to, to drive policy and set a strategic vision for the county as a whole. As I said and Stefan said, county staff have been working with your city manager as well as staff for months now and really this is the start of a conversation, we hope to, to have more spaces for this. Stefan did a really good job of sort of giving us the history, so I'm not going to, going to dive more into this. Really sort of the heart of some of the history is this concept of a continuum of care, which Stefan did a really great job of explaining what it is. It really is in a lot of ways the backbone to how homeless services came to be, but one of the things I really want to point out is that even it's a short history relative to other social service areas, in recent years, there has been a tremendous amount of change, both in terms of the complexity of the issue, but also in terms of resources. So we're seeing state investments, local investments, to a point where we built the COC in the context of 1994 and we really haven't revisited how we both look at the issue and how we are resourced locally. And so today, we're really seeking to sort of reorient ourselves to, to think, is this serving us the best way that, that we could be, that we would like? Again, Stefan talked a lot about the COC. It's a very, very, I don't know, very, very complex. It's a very strange part of federal regulation and, but what I can say is that if you've seen one COC, you've seen one COC. Virtually, if you look at COCs across the state and I presume as well as the nation, every single one is organized slightly different. Federal law does have some requirements. There's a requirement that you have a broad membership, which generally is anybody in the community working to address homelessness. It doesn't have to be defined. They also require you have a, a board of appointed or elected members who, who serve to make day-to-day decisions. As Stefan said, in our community, that's a board of about 32 people when we're fully seated. And then it requires you have what's called a collaborative applicant and HMIS lead to do the day-to-day work. In many communities, that work is done at the county level of government, which makes sense. Counties hold other social service responsibilities. Typically, the, the geography of the COC matches the county. In our community, it is overseen by a local nonprofit, Sacramento Steps Forward. Currently, this, this is not a surprise to any of you, you know, the changing federal and state landscape, the individual needs of each communities are changing. We're seeing a larger crisis of the impacts of unsheltered homelessness and really looking to ways that we can, as locals, braid new and innovative ways to address homelessness. It's no longer the case where we can sort of look to one funding source or one program to, to solve this issue. And as Stefan said, in December of 2023, the county, along with Sacramento Steps Forward, did hire a consultant to bring some high-level ideas about how we might want to reorganize ourselves and the outcome of, of that work led to, to what I'm going to share today. So I apologize for the difficulty in reading this. You should all have a paper version as well that maybe is a little bit easier to read. I want to just quickly go through, this is the recommendation that we've shared with the Board of Supervisors as well as with most of the city councils at this point. We have two more to go in the coming weeks. Currently, as I said earlier, we do have a, or Stefan said earlier, we have a continuum of care board that consists entirely of non-elected community members. And we also have that homeless policy council, which while it hasn't met in quite a long time, it is consisting almost entirely of elected officials. And this concept, we're, we're seeking to merge those two concepts together into one unified board called the Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board. So just really quickly walking through this in color coordination, in red are the eight existing elected bodies in Sacramento County, not attempting or recommending any changes to your jurisdictional oversights or your authorities. You maintain budgetary and policy control for what happens here in the City of Rancho Cordova. Below, in what is transparent purple and potentially a little difficult to see on the screen, is that broader COC membership. So this is really reflective of those of us in the community, elected, faith-based businesses, law enforcement partners, who all work in this space of addressing homelessness. In the new model, we would recommend that this, this membership be more codified, be more specific and that actually have roles to play. Right now, they don't have any specific roles to play. In this model though, the work of the continuum of care is really pulled closer to the work within communities that you are already doing within your city council. So in yellow is that Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board. This is our proposed for that new body that I described, merging the existing policy council with the COC board, but really tasked to make, establish a strategic vision for our region, establish performance targets for programs that we might all run individually in our communities. And in this model, that board is primarily consisting of elected officials, but is advised by a series of subcommittees, those little green boxes, who would be representative of various community interest. And then below the, that, that section of the model is in blue is what we're calling the Strategic Leadership Group. This is, would be comprised of decision-making staff of the various organizations that are implementing homeless programs. That might be myself and Stefan from your community. It would be the Executive Director of SSF, should they remain in their, in their role. And then of course, all of us are running and overseeing direct programs and services in the community. As I noted earlier, in federal statute, COCs look different no matter where you go. And so consistent with that, there is very little requirements in terms of who has a seat at that COC board. The only requirements is that they be representative of relevant organizations who address homelessness in your community and that at least one member must be a person with lived experience of homelessness. How large that COC board is and how those seats are filled are, are locally determined. And so our proposal is that this new homeless and housing board would serve not only as the COC board, but have functions beyond those mandated things the COC currently does, which are pretty prescriptive. They oversee the point in time count. They manage the HMIS data system. They oversee a pretty substantial grant application on an annual basis. But we would want to merge that work with the policy work that you guys are grappling with probably weekly and that our boards and other councils are grappling with as well. So on this screen, I show two proposals here, but actually this is unlimited choice. You could choose to have a smaller COC board, a larger board, different membership representations. But in the two options I presented here, both include up to 10 elected officials. That would be two members from the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, two from the Sacramento City Council and one from each of the remaining city councils who chose to participate. In option A, you'll see that we add the one member with lived experience, which is a requirement for COC compliance. And in option B, the only difference here is we create four dedicated seats for community members. At the discretion of this, these could be designated seats, like you want to make sure you have a law enforcement representative, or you want to make sure you have a faith-based representative, or they could annually turn over based on applications. But in either structure, it, the important part is that those subcommittees are really bolstered up today to include the variety of voices from the community who very much want to be a part of this conversation. The next two slides just detail some of the roles that we might see the new homeless and housing board fulfilling. We envision that this new board, unlike the homeless policy council, would have public open meetings under the Brown Act, that they would be a key body in establishing a strategic plan and a vision for the entire community around homelessness. And as well, they'd of course act as the COC board to set some of those more strategic COC requirements, but merging them with the work that's happening in your communities. Some of the specific actions that they might take would be monitoring of the regionally-coordinated homelessness action plan, or RCHAP, which currently is only mandated to be adopted formally by Sacramento City Council, the Board of Supervisors and this COC board, but certainly could and should impact the work in our more suburban cities. And so we would like to elevate that as a, as a policy document that other cities could participate in. We would see this board establishing local performance goals and developing how we use our data to inform decisions that we're making locally. As Stefan said, the COC does receive its own allocation of HAP or H-HAP funding and that this board would then be responsible for setting priorities should there be new funding coming down through that funding source, as well as similarly, should there be new COC funding. Right now, that's probably not on the immediate horizon, but as administrations change and priorities change, we could see that this could be a, a really important part of that board. So then finally, just next steps, over the months of September through November, we have been engaging with all of the city councils. As I said, we have two more to go. We've also met with the COC board once and we're meeting again this Wednesday, seeking input from each of, of those bodies and what they like, what they don't like, what they might want to add, their interest in participating, with the idea that we would have a good sense of who wants to participate and how you want to participate by the end of the year, meaning that by early 2026, we could start working on the formation documents, MOU or partnership agreement, or whatever type of document we seek to, to solidify and formalize this relationship. With that new Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board being seated as early as quarter to 2026. This is of course ambitious and I recognize that, that we may, may need more time, but wanted to set a sort of aspirational timeline for us as we seek input from our community partners. With that, I'll hand it back over to Stefan.
Thank you, Emily. Just a couple more slides and we'll wrap this up. So just want to highlight some of the, again, the key strategic considerations that are with this proposal. First of all, being SB 802 is expected to be reintroduced next year if a collaborative solution is not found in Sacramento County. That, that may or may not be this model and that, so that conversation around SB 802 may come up again next year. Also then, the second strategic consideration here is the main difference between sort of this proposal and, and the current COC is, is really just adding elected official representation and oversight into the current COC. And then there's a few sort of main opportunities and Emily highlighted them already on this, on previous slides, so I won't go too deep into them, but there's a few main areas, I think, where staff sees, you know, potential for sort of the, the, the most opportunity for input or, or policy direction within the new COC or within a, a new COC. And that's the five listed there. So the COC funding, which is about 40 million a year, those decisions are, are primarily guided by HUD requirements in order to sort of maximize scoring and maximize funding. So there may be some limited flexibility on that one. The second one, the H-HAP funding, that, because it's a state-funded program, comes with more flexibility, as long as that is following an adopted local plan. Of course, plans can be updated as well, so there's more flexibility in that second one. The third one would be HMIS. The board would be able to set sort of priorities for improvements and, and set administrative funding to do that. Number four would be setting performance standards for homeless and housing service providers. So the COC currently is the body that sort of sets those performance standards that service providers need to meet in order to get funding. So the board would have the ability to adjust some of those standards to influence overall system performance, although I would highlight in several years that I've been involved, it's a pretty sensitive and difficult process. And then the fifth one would be sort of providing, excuse me, providing regional policy and funding recommendations for all local jurisdictions. The board as proposed would be advisory only and would not speak for the majority. So that's a key consideration for, for this board. If, for the council, if, if that is sort of a priority or if there would be sort of more or less sort of authority, if there be an interest in providing more or less authority to the board, whether that's advisory only or some other kind of authority. So just a couple of questions for the council this evening. Mainly, are there comments? Is there a preference between option A or B presented or another alternative? And then secondly, Sacramento County is hosting a multi-jurisdiction meeting. Apologies, one edit there. The edit, the agenda is still being prepared for that October 28 meeting, but it will be around collaboration around homelessness and there is one council member invited from each of the smaller cities. So we would like to identify who that would be for, for Rancho Cordova. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Stefan. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay. Allow to open it up for council comments or questions?
Can you go back to? Is the people that you work for the county and not for, who's the guy, who's the continuum of care?
Sacramento Steps Forward is the lead agency. I, yes, I work for Sacramento County.
You work for Sacramento. Is Sacramento Steps Forward staying with us?
So we had quite a robust conversation with this, with our Board of Supervisors and our recommendation would be, so the only, the only way to change the collaborative applicant, which is the role Sacramento Steps Forward plays, is the COC board itself. So the Board of Supervisors, the city council cannot decide. What we would recommend is that we keep Sacramento Steps Forward in that role, but with the new board, provide more direct oversight and direction to them. And if at some point in the future, the determination is made that they're not meeting the, the intent or, or we want to make a change, then that new homeless and housing board acting as the COC could, could change the lead applicant.
Okay. So this is one of those things that I, because I've worked with homeless quite a while when the, in the church, I, I really feel like this is the one piece that our community needs help with, because we need to get these people off the streets if we can and help them out with their, you know, there's so many different, there's so many different pieces to this when it comes to psychological, what type of homeless person is it? Is it homeless with a car, homeless couch surfing? Is it a homeless person that, it's just, there's so many different continuums of care that have to go into this and I don't, I don't, I don't envy what you guys have to go through to be able to do this, but I do believe that one of the major pieces that I've seen lacking in the whole thing is the, the introduction and application of technology. I mean, I've seen our own team struggle with trying to be able to put this stuff together, be able to get the funding out, just to be able to find homes when really, you know, just to go into housing units to be able to put it into one system where you'd be able to look it up. And if you're a policeman driving around and you find a homeless person that's in the community and you want to say, hey, you can't stay here, but you can stay and hit a button and let it pull up. I was saying, that kind of technology exists. In fact, you can get it on templated and it's just one of those things that I really feel we need to move forward to. So I like the idea of, well, Dave, do you have time to do this right now? Okay. Lynda?
Sorry, sorry. Where, where are we going with this?
Like who can say?
I think that's, we're not there yet. So can we go back to that slide?
You already volunteered?
Yeah.
Okay. Well then.
Let's, let's go, go back to, then I, I understand your, and if your comments, do you have any comments before we go to preference A or B? I think that's a question from staff. And then we can go to who represents.
No, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, please do.
So go back to the slide. So what, remind us what the uses are of these small amounts in item one and two?
So Emily, I'll take a stab at this, but feel free to fill in. So the COC funding is primarily for homeless housing and services. So it, it is sort of the main funder for permanent supportive housing and transitional housing and, and maybe some other services as well for Sacramento County. So a number of the homeless housing agencies providing permanent supportive housing or transitional housing receive funding to operate and provide services from the COC program.
What about the 10 to 15 million?
Yeah. The only thing I would add about this, Stefan is fully right. COC funding almost exclusively goes to permanent housing and it almost exclusively goes to renew. So it's not $40 million new every year. It's, it's pretty much your, your continuing funding for, for projects that were funded over time. The HAP funding is more flexible. However, every year, again, the state introduces new requirements. However, generally, HAP funds can be spent on more emergency solutions like sheltering, non-congregate sheltering. They can support some outreach activities as well as housing. So we have more flexibility in the HAP funds.
So Stefan, how much do we typically have to, how much have we typically had to spend to create Mather Veterans Village Phase One or Phase Two or Phase Three?
So our, our local contribution to the Mather Veterans Village has been in the range of one to three, four-ish million dollars per phase to get them constructed. This funding provides sort of ongoing service. This funding provides sort of ongoing services support for the services that are being provided. So the COC funding is maybe not, hasn't been used historically, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, to bring online new permanent supportive housing, or to build new construction housing units, but it's been sort of more providing ongoing operations services.
And so how much did St. Anton, St. Anton's project cost?
The St. Anton Affordable Housing Project, ours, the city contribution to that one was about 2.7 million.
Yes, but what was the total cost?
Putting me on the spot here. Total cost, that was about 82 units, so that one was about 40, 45 million dollars.
So the point is, it takes a lot of money to get any of this done. So what is there about either of this, either of these, either version A or version B that actually helps anybody build housing?
So with these funding sources, that's maybe not as much of the opportunity, as much as sort of maintaining ongoing services and making sure that the existing providers are performing at a high level of service. This board would have the opportunity to sort of discuss and meet, to discuss sort of policy or other funding decisions that local governments could take to bring on more homeless housing units.
And so am I reading number five correctly, that you expect there to be 44 local officials on this thing?
Sorry, no. Well, well, there could be some flexibility. 10 is sort of an arbitrary number. As Emily mentioned, it could be more, could be more than that.
I think it said up to 10.
Yeah, our recommendation was up to 10. That being said, because the COC board composition could be anything you wanted, you, it could certainly be, one of our interests that we heard from our board, as well as from others, is trying to have a smaller board, more manageable. Right now, the COC board is 32 members. It's just a little bit unwieldy to, to make strategic policy decisions with that many people, so.
Can, can, yeah. Can you put up that slide where you talk about, you know, the 10 plus one lived member?
So, so this, as I said, this is just two options. As I said, you know, the COC regulations and federal statute really gives a lot of leeway to locals, to try to, to, the interest from the Board of Supervisors is really to try to have as much elected representation from the various councils and board members. So we, we came up with 10 by doing the two, two, and then the plus the six other councils. Option B, I will say, as we've sort of been talking about this with other councils, and most notably the COC board itself, there is a little bit of concern about having an option that does not include a robust amount of community members. So option B is four community members. You know, you could determine whether that's robust or not, but I've seen COC boards that are 40, 45 people. I mean, it, it really, or you could have seven people.
Fair point. I think, I think this, this presentation now requires two votes, or two, the feedback on two items. One is option A, and one is this one. So if council has any other questions, comments, I think we can go check this off, the list.
Somewhat related question, Stefan. When is Mather Four breaking ground? Do we have an even month here?
We do, we do. So.
Someone emailed me recently, because I knocked on doors there, and I've gotten a few emails from the veterans there, who are like, holy crap, someone came out and talked to us, so.
So, yes, so we have received an award from the State Home Key Plus program, and the public announcement embargo has been lifted. So we do now have a six to eight-month statutory deadline to begin construction on that project. So we will be in construction. We're aiming for February of 2026.
Okay, I told them sometime 2026, so I was half right.
You're right.
So, so yeah, this item highlights the need for better coordination across our region in addressing homelessness and housing, and one of this is the composition of this new Council, can we vote on option A or option B?
Yeah, and I, I don't think we need a formal vote. This is just feedback and direction. So if you have feedback that you like smaller numbers or bigger numbers for the board, I think this is really, it's not a formal action, so this is just direction and comment from the council, right?
I'll give my feedback. I like option A, just because the four community leaders from sectors, that's, you know, this board staff's job to bring them in. I think it's crutching yourself to have too big of a board, as it's already become. So the smaller and tighter, you can keep it, and you'll always have experts to come in and advise you. That's never going to stop, but too many cooks in the kitchen, I think, is part of the reason why we all have our hands tied on the homelessness issue.
Doesn't it make sense intuitively that the fewer number, the smaller the bureaucracy, especially a new bureaucracy that is created and has to learn to work together and thinks it's going to write a plan that will apply to everybody, and?
I concur with that, Linda. My main concern is accountability. I think accountability has been lost, particularly from the state level, in how dollars have been spent on homelessness, and we don't know how they were spent, or where they were spent, or what the result was. We haven't measured anything. So there's zero accountability in a lot of the spending around homelessness. We, at the local level, have accountability with our local populations.
We do.
Unlike other levels of government, perhaps, you know, county, city leaders, our residents know that there's a problem and that we're not fixing it. So I, I am in favor of whichever option, which I think is option A, lends itself to greater accountability.
I think I might be the lone wolf here. I'm actually in favor of option B, because, you know, there's elected officials, and one member with lived experience. I don't know what that means. It means a member elected has to be homeless at some point in life?
Could be, or, or another member of the community who has that experience.
But how would that be in option A?
There's still a member with lived expertise in option A.
So an elected official with lived?
It could be the, if the elected official has that, as Stefan said, but if not, then it would be a set aside.
Okay, so 10 plus one.
It could be up to 11, right? Unless you happen to have the issue where an elected official also served that.
Fair point. Again, to that point, right? So I'm actually in favor of option B, just because we have elected officials, and then there is, sometimes they don't, might not have all the relevant and needed data, and they, in fact, know much more about what can be done, and, and will say, like, this cannot be done, because they have all that information. But community leaders might come up with a blank slate and say, this is what we want done. So I'm in favor of option B.
Well, the interesting thing is, sometimes our navigators have actually lived on the street. And, and, and so that's part of what makes them incredibly effective in what they do.
And just to confirm something the city manager said earlier, after we get sort of input from all the cities, we'll go back and sort of hold all the comments together. But should we move to actually forming this board? You, this council will have to take formal action. So this would not be the last time that you would see it, to take an actual formal action.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And so we'll move on to the next step on that piece, if somebody were to put that slide.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thought you were done with us.
Yeah. We would like you to. Who should represent Rancho Cordova at the joint meeting? I, I would nominate Linda, because she's actually represented as in these meetings before, and if that's okay with her? I think that's a nod for yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. We nominate Linda Budge.
Thank you, Linda.
Go get this money and take care of homeless.
160 homeless that we do have here in Rancho Cordova. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda topic, can the city clerk please announce the subject?
16.2, presentation from Cordova Community Council Foundation on fiscal year 2024 through 25 outcomes and accomplishments, and a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the fourth reinstated grant agreement with the Cordova Community Council Foundation. And staff reporting on this will be Megan Siren, in lieu of Kim Duran.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, we're here to hear from the Cordova Community Foundation. Shelley Blanchard will, is here, and she will present. We also will be discussing the fourth restated agreement, which the presentation is slowly coming up. It's coming. So just a reminder that the city has given grants to the Cordova Community Council since 2007 to create the professionally managed umbrella organization for all the nonprofits, and to provide community events, and volunteer management, and arts and culture, and youth sports in Rancho Cordova. This fourth stated grant agreement will cover the two-year budget period, which is July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2027. And I will shift to Shelley, who can present on the outcomes of the last year and look forward to the next year.
Persephone is working her magic. I wanted to, I want to thank you, first of all, for your actions earlier tonight. This is sort of a continuation of that conversation in a way, as we look forward to the next couple of years of lots of fun here in Rancho Cordova. A lot of our members remained here tonight for this presentation, and some did have to leave because of the hour, but I think that they did a wonderful job of expressing to you how important it is that we do this work together to make our community the great place that it is. I just, really quickly, I'm going to move fast because of the hour, I'm just going to present a brief background about our organization. I don't want to take anything for granted here, a brief outline on what the community council efforts and outcomes were for 2025, even though we have a very robust final quarter to go, and that we're looking ahead to additional activities in 2026. Just as a reminder, we have been around since 1959 to foster collaboration in community life. We've been doing this for 65 years, and because of that, the spirit of working together to create a vibrant Rancho Cordova is really still a hallmark of our community life here. We helped establish the city of Rancho Cordova. Our members were the petitioners for incorporation. We, volunteerism is very important to us. We encourage and honor it every chance we get. And as I like to tell you and everybody else who will listen to me, we like to help you fall in love with our great city. We do this with a mighty team, and some of them, I think, are still here. There they are. We've got, we've got Cheryl Gleason from the MAC, we've got Jason Harper from RCA. We've got Taylor Haven from our event specialist, and Andrea Medina, and we have our brand-new team member, Madeline Sanderson, who has joined our event specialist, and she's lasted an entire week. That has included two late nights at Heartstopper's already. Did I miss anybody? I think I got everybody. Yes, a couple of our board members are here. Adam Laird is here, Rod Borba is here. Anybody else? That'll have to do. Okay, let's see. We are here to tell you we've been busy in 2020, 2025. Here are just a few of the things we've been doing. You can read, so I won't go through this long list of things. We do them all with the help of dedicated volunteers, who we are always recruiting. We try to provide a really wide variety of events and activities, because we know there is no one-size-fits-all, and we're a city of 85,000, so that's a lot of ground to cover. Our biggest event in 2025 was, as usual, the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July, which attracted more than 27,000 people, plus, I don't know how many thousand at a parade. And people vote with their feet, and that's a lot of feet. That's over 50,000 feet. Whether it is the arts, youth sports, music, parades, movies, or zombies that you love, we had something for you in 2025. We know you know us for our events, but I wanted to take an opportunity to tell you a couple of things you may not know that we do. For example, did you know that the invocation at the beginning of your meeting was arranged by the Cordova Community Council and has been for the past 20 years? The 23, did you know that 23 Rancho Cordova nonprofit organizations, ranging from the Cordova High School football team to the VFW, raised a total of $75,000 at the California Capitol Air Show this spring, working through the Cordova Community Council? We've been doing that for more than 15 years. Did you know that the Crocker Art Museum's famed art ark will be visiting our Rancho Cordova Elementary School campuses this month, four of them? Did you know that was arranged and funding was secured through the Cordova Community Council? Did you know that Heartstopper's haunted house engages more than 150 people, mostly young adults, year-round, who come and, to the mind shaft to learn theater skills, like costuming and makeup, and to belong to a community, and to be part of something bigger themselves? Did you know that CCC helps other Rancho Cordova nonprofit organizations find insurance, identify facility space, navigate permitting, promote activities, and raise money for their own activities, raising the bar all across community life? And the list goes on. So here's what it kind of looks like in our recruitment video for 2026. Who wouldn't want to live there? We have a special, a couple of special areas of focus, in addition to our community special events. And taken together, these also touch hundreds of Rancho Cordova families every month of the year. And the first is the Mill Station Arts and Culture Center, one of our favorite spots. It is hard to believe today that Rancho Cordova arts community did not even exist a decade ago. So today, we have the MAC, we have the Symphony d'Or, we have Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band, Rancho Cordova Arts Separate Nonprofit that we also support, and emerging theater groups in the community and more, they're all covering the landscape. We put a special picture of Cheryl Gleason there, because literally Cheryl has put the MAC on the regional arts calendar, she is the regional arts leader, and just this last past week, she was honored as a KVIE, KVIE, KVIE award winner, so, as an artist in her own right. So very proud of the work Cheryl's doing at the MAC. The second area of special focus for us is the recreational youth sports leagues, in which more than now 5,371 Rancho Cordova players are now participating. With your help, we are removing financial barriers to play, improving facilities, developing coaches and players of character, and raising the profile of youth sports overall. The Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame has become a signature event for our community. We are in year three of an effort to, a five-year effort to increase youth sports participation by 5% a year. by 5% a year. In 2024, participation grew by 13%, and we did backflips. We are not sure which gymnastics move we are going to have to make this year. When we, are you ready for this? We are on track to grow this year by 52%, largely due to the introduction of two new sports, a clinic-based cricket activity, an explosion of youth basketball in Rancho Cordova, and Garrick Gatewood, you told us that would happen if we brought basketball, so thank you for that encouragement. In fact, believe it or not, basketball is on course to overtake soccer as the most popular youth sport in our community with 1,366 players this year, just as you predicted, Mr. Gatewood. So looking ahead for 2026, we are in the process of setting some lofty goals for ourselves. We plan to grow our volunteer community. We will deliver great events that are fun and boost community love and city pride. We will identify community gaps and fill them. We will grow youth sports participation by 5% while building better athletes and better people. We will make Rancho Cordova the place for art and artists. We will implement a robust succession strategy for the Cordova Community Council, including financial succession, which you helped us address earlier tonight, and we will coordinate and plan activities which mark the 250th anniversary of the great United States of America by making Rancho Cordova an active participant in America 2050. So to drill down on that just a little bit more, we are going to be celebrating, everybody get used to this word, this semi-quinsentennial of America, that as a country, now, did you figure out how this works? Semi-quinsentennial is 100 years, so a semi, or 500 years, so semi-quinsentennial is 250 years. You're welcome. Nationally, this will be celebrated from Memorial Day through the Fourth of July. This American milestone will be marked by a lot of activities across the country, and we want to be in the thick of it. So in Rancho Cordova, we, our journey will, toward this historic milestone will include an opportunity to work with fellow Americans on some of the goals that have been set forth by America 250, which include renewing a love of America, experiencing the beauty of our country, rekindling the volunteer spirit, and igniting our American spirit of adventure and innovation. Some of these things, you've got to head start with the last, at your last meeting, right? With that wonderful announcement and creating an ecosystem for AI. What we are planning to do is reconfiguring some of our great events to be part of this great celebration. So the theme for Kids' Day this year is America the Beautiful, to help our kids appreciate the beauty of our great country. And that can range from state birds and state flowers to the beautiful places where we live. Our IFest celebration will focus on the e pluribus unum, the motto of our country, "Out of many, one." We are a living, breathing example of that, Rancho Cordova, in Rancho Cordova, almost 25% of the people who live here were born elsewhere. And that's nationwide, that compares with the national average of about 14%, so we are living this "out of many, one," and we are going to celebrate that at IFest, celebrating native cultures even while people are becoming Americans. On Memorial Day, we've chosen, it's going to be a grand old flag is our youth art contest for that event. You know what we've discovered is that Memorial Day is an opportunity for us to teach young people in our community about some of our traditions, and so this year, we're going to talk a lot about the American flag. Imagine moonlight movies with, you know, free all-America hot dog nights while we watch great flicks like, you know, Independence Day or An American Tale for Little Kids. We will have a wonderful Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Parade, as always. Our All-America Run will follow, and then we have the big, biggest party of the year here in Rancho Cordova, the Rancho Cordova Festival and Fireworks, which will happen on a Saturday this year. So anybody here who can bring us that 80-degree weather we had last year, that would be much appreciated. We're also planning to develop some America 250 assets. We've, we are developing some traveling exhibits that we will use at our events, but we want to loan out to churches, or schools, or anybody else who would like to use them, as we kind of educate ourselves about some of our history surrounding the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And then we're going to align with the National America 250 Organization and ensure that Rancho Cordova has great representation, renewing, renewing the love of America, experiencing the beauty of our country, volunteering, and igniting our spirit of adventure and innovation. So as we look ahead, it's going to be a fun year, for sure. I would go on and on about how all our members are so involved with what we do, but you saw that earlier tonight. I don't think I need to do that. You saw a demonstration earlier of how we work together here in Rancho Cordova, but I do think it's worth repeating a couple of things, like, you know, you heard tonight, you know, from others what the CCC does, and that is that we create moments for people here. We create moments that unite us, and moments that inspire pride, and moments that remind every resident, young and old and everything in between, that we belong here, right? And as our city grows, that sense of community really becomes more and more essential. I mean, we need spaces to celebrate, we need spaces to want, honor each other, we need spaces to inspire the next generation of volunteers and leaders. And so supporting the Cordova Community Council ensures that these spaces remain vibrant, welcoming, and alive. So tonight, I'm asking you to help safeguard the spirit of our community, approve the billboard, thank you for that, we're approving that, give the Cordova Community Council what it needs to continue bringing joy and pride and connection to Rancho Cordova for generations to come. And with that, I will stop talking and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Shelley. Before we ask you any questions, any public comments? Those who've spoken about this in the first time, you don't have to come again.
So I have about 20 public comment cards. Some of the comment cards had two items listed on them, and they wanted to speak under both items, but as you can see, many have left us. So I'm going to call off the names for the cards that I have, and if you're here and you would like to speak, you are welcome to come forward. I would like to ask the mayor, two minutes or three minutes for public?
Two minutes, please.
Okay, two minutes for public comment. So we'll start with Jen Larrett. Jen? Looks like Jen is coming forward. After Jen will be Dennis Grammuth. Dennis, are you here?
No.
No, thank you. Beth Terrell, are you here? Yes, and did you want to speak on this topic?
Well, let's put it this way, we have a, if you submit a speaker card if you're here, just line yourself up behind Jen.
Jen?
Okay. One thing that Shelley did not mention that they do for youth sports is they really advocate for us collectively. You know, when we first started the Rancho Cordova Track Club, we were, you know, getting ourselves together, and we were working directly with FCUSD, and in our first three years of being a club, we paid over $40,000 in facility fees to FCUSD. And so we were really trying to get those costs down because what we, what we were bringing in, like, we do not make money off our kids who register. What we, what they register, we take those funds, they get their uniform, all of their entry fees into races, and different things like that. So when we would fundraise by hosting events, we were basically taking that fundraising money to pay for the facility fees that we had. So really, what happened for us was the RCA A was able to step in and collectively bargain on our behalf for all leagues. So I know it really impacted track, I know it impacted softball pretty significantly as well on these facility fees, and we were able to finally get an MOU-in agreement in place. So this is the first year we haven't had these, like, extensive facility fees that we're paying. So all the money that we're able to fundraise now goes right back into equipment, costs, and different things like that, which helps us to eventually wean ourselves off those Measure H money requests that we have to put in as leagues and things like that, because a lot of what we were having to do with track was because we had these extensive facility fees, because if I wasn't paying $40,000 to FCUSD over a three-year period of time, I could buy equipment and would have to ask for Measure H money. So, you know, by funding, you know, the CCC, it actually helps all the leagues to start having a sustainable model, which we've been all collectively, like, working towards a more sustainability factor for us, and really advocating for us. So, so I think they actually do more for the leagues than what they're saying that they do for us. It's all this other advocacy work that they do on our behalf that we don't have to try to, like, deal with individually as leagues. So, thank you.
Next speaker, if you'd like to come forward and state your name.
So I'm Melanie Freyer from the Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band. I spoke earlier, I'm going to just keep this relatively brief. I'm just asking you that you please renew the CCC's two-year operations grant, which supports the many programs in Rancho Cordova, including the performing arts such as Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band, it's a super-long name, sorry. With the CCC's support, the band has enhanced many, many events within Rancho Cordova, including concerts at Coriana Plaza, the Rancho Cordova Pack at the high school, Heart Stoppers Haunted House was just Saturday, Memorial Day events, city celebrations, state of the city events, Fourth of July, trifitting a band on the back of a flatbed truck, and then Kids' Day, and many, many other things. Additionally, the Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band has served as ambassadors for Rancho Cordova at musical events outside of Rancho Cordova, including locally Carmichael, but also out in San Francisco at Golden Cape Park. So please help us continue the Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band's desire to share music before audiences of diverse backgrounds, foster musical interest in children, provide performance opportunities for skilled community musicians by renewing this two-year operations grant to support us and many other enrichment programs in Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Jim Sullivan, Chief Master Sergeant, U.S. Air Force Retired, and Chairman of the Local Chapter of the Non-Commissioned Officers Association, a 501(c)(19) nonprofit. My wife is also the International Auxiliary President and a former employee of the Rancho Chamber of Commerce. But we're here this evening to put a plug in for the Council, primarily from a veteran's perspective. We know all of the things they do for lots of agencies, but from the veteran's standpoint, the events they put together for the Memorial Day, the Veterans' Day, the 9/11 Remembrance Activity last year was just incredible. And the point I want to drive home is, it's not just affecting the Rancho Cordova community. When we have our meetings and our organization, we take all of the things that are happening in Rancho out to other places, North Highlands, Roseville, Lincoln, and people come to these events in Rancho from those other areas because of the incredible work that's done by the Council and all the events they put together. So I just, you may not know where those people are from, but we know, we know where they're in from Lincoln, Roseville, and a lot of different places, and that's in a tribute to the efforts of the Community Council in supporting all the veterans' programs. So we're certainly in favor of the continued grant. Thank you.
My name is Jim Hunter. I am a big supporter of the Cordova Community Council's efforts to provide the types of activities that I personally have been involved in. I am a volunteer board member with Rancho Cordova Arts. I'm a volunteer over a lot of activities at the MAC, and I've been a volunteer for the last couple of years at many of the activities through CCC. I believe very strongly that these, these programs have impact that a lot of people don't see. It's, it's a lot more than just activities that create fun, from where I stand. When you see a student, local student, come to the gallery and see their artwork hanging on the wall, and you watch the expressions in those kids' faces, it's amazing how it makes you feel. When you see a teacher tear up when she's handed art supplies that she can't afford for her students to learn artwork, it, it just breaks your heart. These activities through CCC are very important. I think it, it goes even deeper than that, in that it sparks creativity. Creativity is not something that is learned, it is something that is unlearned. Throughout our lives, we are taught to paint between the lines, we are taught to follow the rules, we aren't taught to think creatively, and yet, every single profession that I can think of, politician, lawyer, businessperson, you may, you name it, creativity is really important in those professions. And what I've seen through Rancho Cordova Arts and CCC is that spark that starts to develop in people of all ages. And so I really want to strongly support, it might be redundant because it looks like you've already passed the movement toward the billboard, which should create income for CCC, but please keep supporting CCC as a resident of Rancho Cordova since 1960. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I come to you tonight as Cheryl Gleason, not from the MAC, not as the art director and curator, but as president of Rancho Cordova Arts. We are a nonprofit that wouldn't exist if it weren't for CCC. Thirteen years ago, we started art right here in City Hall because a resident came and asked, "Where's the art?" to Shelley Blanchard. "There isn't any." Well, that needs to be rectified. From that became meetings. I was not working, I was working here in Rancho, I was a person who submitted to those art programs here in the, in the city. But what, what is not talked about, we get that CCC helps and nurtures and guides other nonprofits, but what you don't see is, they not only create them, they make them sustainable. Rancho Cordova Arts has 291 members. We get, we have elected this year to get half of our funding cut because we don't need it, because we are that strong as an independent nonprofit in Rancho Cordova. That is because we had great leadership, great guidance by Shelley Blanchard, who believed in this small bunch of ragtag, completely disoriented and just flaky artists. I will also tell you that, as an organization, we have given, in the last five years, over $78,000 worth of art supplies to teachers in Rancho Cordova schools. So not only do they give to the nonprofits, but they're teaching the nonprofits how to give back to the city.
Please wrap up your comments.
You cannot buy that, except for with your grant. Please support.
Rod Borba, current board member. Shelley reminds me, I guess I joined in probably 2007 when the first grant came in, and so it's been a while, I didn't know that. My first experience, first I want to say to the City Council, when I first watched you, Linda, David, other founders, your positivity has always been present, and, and I see the current City Council fostering that same movement. My first experience to the Cordova Community Council was 1988, when I went into my backyard with my daughter on her birthday, and she saw the fireworks at Haggen Park and said, "Oh, the fireworks for me." I didn't know who did it, but then I learned through the people fundraising in front of Rayleigh's with the Ironing Board, that that was the Cordova Community Council, 65 years old, so that's almost 40 years ago I moved here.
old. So that's almost forty years ago I moved here. What I've seen of being on the board is that what we do is for the people. And what we do every day in our board meetings every month is talk about what we can do for the people of this community. And that makes me proud. And as you, as you developed that harmonious first contract in 2007, the ideas that were generated by Shelley and the board have continued to grow, much like the city in terms of its power to the, to the region. We started off talking about, we want to improve the image of this city, and that's what Cordova Community Council does every day.
Please wrap up your comments.
So I just wanted to say that the robust sports that you, you, you want in this city, the arts and music program that you want in this city, we are making that happen for you and for the people of this community. And I'm very proud to serve on this board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Helen Waylon Bishaw, I'd like to know, the billboard has been in place, how much money is that billboard own, made, and what portion of it is going back into the community? I noticed that we're getting bigger and brighter with fireworks. You're putting off fireworks near Hagan Park, which is next to the National Wild and Scenic River System called American River Parkway. You're affecting wildlife. You're affecting people's pets. Can't you do a fireworks display with drones? That's the up and coming thing. It would not create the fire hazard that the fireworks could potentially do if one of them goes astray. It's not affecting the wildlife on the American River Parkway that might have young there or the neighborhood pets that go unclaimed and go running wild, and some of them run into the American River Parkway, never to be seen again because they fall into the food chain. I think we, as a city, we're talking about innovation. Why not go to drones? Because the fireworks are, to me, a safety hazard for the community and the wildlife who actually live along there. We're squatters into their environment. Thank you.
James Garcia, Stone Creek resident. I see a lot of good that the Cordova Community Council does. We've already are now allowing them to have a bigger revenue generating source by having one billboard that was approved. Well, it was two, but one was built officially. Now we're just allowing the second one to finally come to fruition. So I, I'm concerned with the fact that we have in the budget, already adopted budget, 1.6 million dollars per year for this organization. It's, it's an awful lot. Measure H is giving 580,000 dollars per year for that, for the 2526 year, and also the 2026 and 2027 year. One million seventy-five thousand is going to go out of the general fund. We have a lot of other resources that we could use that money on at times. We have communities that need lighting, sidewalks, you name it. We've had a lot there. We have areas that are being underserved, especially Lincoln Village. They have a incredibly turbulent Lincoln Village Drive now that there are a number of weird traffic calming measures there, so to speak. It, it's just kind of a concern. We're giving one organization a huge amount of money where this could be spread throughout the city in different avenues as well. I know the children need funding here and there. Sports can be a source, but it's not the only source of activity. The PAL group can get more funding. We can have our community centers open. We can do other things with this. So just consider it, especially moving forward now that they have two self-sustaining financial stability platforms for them, and they were not asking for a handout. So just give consideration to that moving forward. Thank you.
That's all the speakers that we have this evening for this item. In addition, we had five individuals who submitted public comment via email. Those individuals are Anu Alton Bond, Linda Burkholder, Mark Shelter, Tara Colvinbach, and Cheryl Longsworth.
Council, do you have any comments, questions?
I have a little bit. And it's just going to the America 250 thing. Never even heard of that. I Googled it. Here's what Wikipedia says. Axios described them as taking on a MAGA bent since January 2025 with Trump's coming into office. They soft-launched at Trump's military parade. Trump's fired all the contractors he perceives as being associated with Democrats. He's installed Fox News hosts and Trump campaign officials as leaders, partnered with conservative organization PragerU to provide educational materials for festivities, and had an America 250 partner with a cryptocurrency event featuring his two sons. The committee has also partnered with conservative organization Moms for Liberty, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't want to support a political organization with city money.
Councilmember, I just Googled America 250, and the first thing that pops up is it's a nonpartisan initiative working to engage every American.
And I did more research than you because Trump's taking it over.
I would say it was, it was actually the founding presidents were President Obama and President Bush. So they were the founding, this has been in the works for some time.
Right. I just don't want to support something that's becoming a mouthpiece for hateful politics.
I would agree with you on that, sir.
So let's just rename it. In this context, I would assume it's just a celebration of the 250th anniversary.
Well, there was stuff in the slides about seeking recognition by the organization and providing assets from them. So I don't think it's just as easy as renaming it.
Okay.
Just for clarity, the National League of Cities is engaged in America 250, and we're not a MAGA organization.
Being run by, it's been taken over, so it doesn't matter about that.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
So I would be happy to move the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the fourth restated grant agreement with the Cordova Community Council Foundation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Budge, thank you. Councilmember Little.
No, because you don't need us anymore. You got your billboard.
Councilmember Sander.
Yes.
Mayor Pulapotti.
Yes.
The motion passes with a four-one vote with Little as no.
We move on to item 16.3. Can I have the city collector please announce the subject?
Yes. Discussion and possible adoption of a resolution adopting a code of conduct for the city council, city commissions, and city boards.
Mike, a runner for the staff report?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just real, real briefly, council asked staff to bring back a conversation and, and draft code of conduct to consider. There's various ways that cities have done this work in different places, through governance manuals, or rules or procedures, or resolutions. There's a variety of ways that this has been done. You see some of those examples in, attached to the staff report today. Our approach for this conversation was to give a potential option to consider by a simple resolution, as far as to keep it simple. In order to make the conversation today potentially easier, we prepared what, what we thought was a, a good example based on what others have done to put before you for consideration. And then really, it is your prerogative, however, and so you have some choices here, and I'll kind of lay out, you actually have unlimited choices, but I'll lay out the four that I see in my mind for you. One is adopt the resolution as is. The second is adopt the resolution with minor edits that can be made by, by motion. The third is decide not to pursue a code of conduct, so you can always say, no, we don't want to do this. And the fourth is, if you have kind of, want to go deep in, in some of the edits or some of the changes in what was before you, I would actually recommend that we do that in a study session or work session environment. We just wanted to put something in front of you that was a potential that you could adopt. But if you want to go deep and make some other edits to it, I would recommend that you actually move this item to a work session or study session for that larger conversation. So those are the options that I kind of see before you today, and so we're just looking for direction or approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. James Garcia is our first speaker on this topic, and then Helen Waylon Bishaw. Two minutes or three minutes? Mayor Pulapotti?
We're going to keep to two minutes.
Okay.
Two minutes is fine. I don't need a whole lot. James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just kind of find that this is being targeted towards one council member for a lot of public comment, both here at council chambers and out in the field. Some of it's good, some of it's bad. Limiting the ability to have freedom of speech and differing views is abundantly clear in our, our constitution. We need to have it. So this is kind of a disturbing matter for me to be able to limit that, especially when, again, even though there's no official financial conflict of interest, we've had, a number of council members in the past had to recuse themselves because of living in an area, especially when there was a refund of a tax in the Anatoli area. Three council members lived in that area. They had to actually recuse themselves, but in order to maintain a quorum, we had to draw straws in order to have that. That same practice can be done here if we have a serving member of a board that comes before this. It would be great. Optics are a big thing in this, this world. We need to have that maintained. Recuse yourself. Put that in this resolution if you're going to do that. Have that recusal there. Have it just like the drawing of the straws if you have to maintain a quorum. Because there's enough of you on this board, community council, that will support all these instances. We had abundantly clear. We have a four-to-one vote on both the billboard as well as the grant funding. Don't need to have anybody else here that does not need to be here for any potential optics. Put that in that resolution.
Next speaker. Helen?
Helen Waylon Bishaw again. The resident, having a code of conduct, I think is, like James says, is redundant. It doesn't include the portion that the attorney and I disagree on, and that is all the information that I put up is that a council member involved with a nonprofit group in a unpaid status, part of it says, to, to resolve a conflict, the council member should disclose a relationship with the nonprofit, and it's saying from voting on any matters where their interest is, is involved. That should be part of the code of conduct. And I do believe with all the Googling I've done on the issue of conflict of interest and, and the various, like the FPPC of California rules what is conflict of interest. To add a code of conduct, I think is redundant. There's, there's five of you up here. There's at least three of you here at any one time, at the, at minimum. The, you vote, and to be singling out one member, which is just, this appears to be directed to one council person, I think is wrong. And I think if you're going to do something like this, then you need to have a work group, not just arbitrarily make a decision, which I feel is targeted to one member of the council. Thank you.
Mayor Pulapotti, that's all the public comment that I have for this item.
Council comments, questions, or motion?
Let's take the city manager's suggestion and move it to a workshop. Does that work for you?
This is already an unenforceable resolution with no teeth, and it's already been a waste of staff time as is. I don't think we need to waste more staff time. That's taxpayer money.
Up to the council prerogative as far as how they want to proceed, so.
And I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Sander. Councilmember Little.
Yes, I love it, but we need a code of, of conflict of interest policy ASAP.
Mayor Pulapotti?
Yes.
The motion passes with a five-zero vote.
We're all held accountable to this code of conduct, so please ensure that everybody reads it and follows it.
I want to mention, though, there was something in the code of conduct about reading the packet and not asking questions at council on the dais that could be answered by staff if you read the packet. I've had so many countless questions I've heard tonight from the special meeting session of people obviously not having read the packet. So let's have that enforced. It was in there. It's one of the line items. Awesome.
Guess we can note violation number one of the code of conduct.
Yeah.
Council requests for future agenda items?
Yeah, so we are building a stadium, and they would like some help with the planning side, so I was hoping that we could split up the group, and maybe two of us work on making sure the business part gets pushed through on our side, and two people work on the planning side. And I'd like to see if Linda and David would be able to jump off and work with Cause Pure and them to make sure that we get all the planning done, because we need to get this thing pushed over the finish line and not let it just sour out.
Thank you for not voting me on the planning side.
Yes. We, we don't do that, but then, and then I was hoping that Siri, me, and you could be on the business side.
So I don't think we can make those recommendations without a future agenda topic. So if you're asking for a future agenda.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, putting on the future agenda.
Yeah, I, I go along with that.
Yeah, please.
Go for it. And I, I would ask, when we bring it back, we should give some thought to making sure that it is actually practically possible to wall off and the council members who would be working on those two different topics. If the topic's interlaid and you're effectively interacting.
We can discuss that. I, I think we can discuss that at that agenda topic. I think the question is today.
We can bring the conversation.
Okay, so we have, I think we have a motion to bring it.
Might even just be one person, just to be able to preserve other people, be able to vote on the project continuing forward.
Yeah, it just, we, we need to have, like, it's critical.
Fair, fair point. Let's talk about it in the topic. So I think the motion is passed to bring this as an agenda topic, and everybody can then decide whether it's one, two.
I heard three interested in the future topic.
Awesome. Any other agenda topics? Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session.
Council reports.
Council reports.
We need to come back to council reports.
Before, okay. Let's go to council reports. Councilmember Little.
Yeah, I had it written down. I went to the city vaccination clinic for this guy. Took fricking forever, though. It was like forty minutes. Like, it was free, but the whole point was to be in and out. There's room for improvement there, that's for sure. I picketed for the first time ever in support of teachers at the former SAC High. That was really cool when the news came out, and had one or another thing, I'm not remembering it. But yeah, not much going on here.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanders?
Lots of NLC meetings, lots of great local events. The Rancho Cordova Athletic Hall of Fame had their event. I was unfortunately out of town at one of the NLC meetings and missed that. But that was a, a great event. There was an art exhibit and a lecture that went along with it that week, really building an amazing amount of community there. There've been a lot of art events, art exhibits, lectures, athletic events, tournaments, meets, all kinds of activity that is building community in Rancho Cordova, and it's just so, so powerful to see that happening. I'm really happy to, to be able to represent us there when I can, and to see so many Rancho Cordovans in attendance and participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge?
Yes. Actually, David's right. There's, there's been so much going on. I think this last month was when the school superintendent came to community council and spoke, and he was very, very interesting. Lots of good things to say. Lots of good things to say. I attended a girls' STEM event out at Mather that was part of the airshow, the whole airshow mantra to get girls in, included in STEM. And they had five or, and ultimately six wonderful ladies who came and were extremely inspirational and, oh, there was something like, there might, there might have been a couple of hundred girls there.
500.
500, is that's what it was? Yeah, I mean, it was huge. It really was. It absolutely.
500 engineers.
Yeah. And, and this is, well, I, I told them, you know, whether you design the aircraft, build the aircraft, fly the aircraft, or maintain the aircraft, there is a role for you in aerospace and aviation. Futures, sky's limit.
Yep.
Not limit. OES, Office of Emergency Services, had a marvelous event that they called Friends and Family Day. It's been, this is the first time they've done it in, in several years. And it was incredibly well-attended. It gave us an opportunity to really connect with them. So I've put their PIO together with our communications team and I've, I already had a, an outreach from them today to talk about something specific that we could all work on together. So that one will bring, could bring opportunity. And we had a regular library meeting and for some reason it went really long this time, but it went long because Sacramento County Office of Education presented this whole program they have for teaching kids to read. And I think I emailed it to you. My, my concern is not being a teacher. I'm not sure how you take all of this philosophy and establish a curriculum that helps teach kids to read. But if, you know, more power to them.
Well, that guy came in recently and said our AI thing was going to teach kids to read, so I think we've got that buttoned up.
We'll see.
We, we are a part of the, the Sacramento Reeds with Rancho Reeds and some of the CIF funding that we've done for the kind of early education stuff. So we're supporting that through some of our efforts.
That's part of this one?
Yep.
Okay. And Saturday was Moose Rib Cook Off, their annual cook-off. We had meetings today and I would ask that we adjourn, speaking of schools, that we adjourn in the memory of a gentleman who for almost 20 years was either principal or vice principal at Mills Junior High, gentleman named Joe Sylvester.
Oh, yeah.
Passed away a couple of weeks ago and he, he took over when Keith Jacob retired. Keith Jacob was the only principal they'd ever had. And then Joe came in and that was the year that my kids started at Mills, so.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Diane Rogers, great golf tournament. I always enjoyed playing poor golf, but always loved to cook the Olympia. Soilball in Farms was amazing and that is the best, closest rancher ever gets to fine dining was when Mulvaney's and all those guys come up. And then I tried to trick them into opening a restaurant and then I get yelled at by Bobbin, who's Mulvaney's wife, who yells at me for trying to make her husband start another thing. Let's see, went to the national cup and coffee thing, that was cool. The Cherry Creek, coolest thing I went to, Cherry Creek, Colorado. They, thank you Jen and Jen Lorette for pushing the school district to build one of the first trade schools, I think that's been built in the last 60 years to work with high school and it's going to be based in Rancho Cordova. And I feel like we're going backwards in time because all of a sudden the trades are what people have jobs in and we're shoving everyone back into it, along with AI, but it's going to be amazing. And I went there and I saw the vision and it was seven bays and they were working on cars. And then right next it was an AI lab and everyone came out with, with smocks and stuff. And all the kids, kids were so proud that they were in different divisions. I just think if we can build that infrastructure, then the 200 to 400 kids we graduate, the ones that don't go to college will have that next step. And honestly, that's the most important thing. Thank River City Christian for throwing a great men's conference, bringing all those amazing people into our city. And lastly, I have some bad news. All the, and this is just the weirdest experience I've ever been on. I went and had coffee with the connect, that's not the bad news, but Sacramento Cable is, is dying and it's the weirdest experience to, to turn down an entire group. So that means all the channels, including the stuff people watch us on, are eventually going to go away because Cable found a way around it and no one wants to fight with them in the federal government. So say goodbye to like watching your politicians on TV, Sacramento local stations, the PBS stations, they all won't make it in the next three to five years. And we're probably out of money in like a year and a half with the way inflation's going. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to pass on my comments because being a mayor, you're pulled in so many directions and have attended many social events and they're all posted on social media, so I'll pass it on to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just highlight and maybe you spent a lot of time doing interviews and things from the good work that was done a couple of weeks ago. So I think the, the mayor and I did some tag teaming on different events and things that you saw from the different announcements. So really happy to do that work on your behalf. And so I think that's it for me.
Sounds good. Before we adjourn to closed session, is there any public comment on that item?
I do not have any public comment for the closed session.
Okay. Do I adjourn in memory now or after closed session?
When we come back.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to adjourn to closed session.
Enjoy your closed session.
I am going to adjourn to closed session.